Okay, we live now? Okay, deja vu all over again. Good evening, this is the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan in Connecticut. Lynn, one more time, tell everyone how you're gonna run the hybrid Zoom meeting, please?
Yeah. So this is a hybrid meeting, so people are attending both in person tonight in the meeting room and also on Zoom. And when there's a public hearing item and there's public comments available, we will take comment from the public first in person and then on Zoom. And we also we have commissioners attending on Zoom and those in person. The only screens that should be visible on screen should be the commissioners, no one else, no one else's video should be showing.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. If anybody in Zoom land is here for one ninety, one ninety Brushy Ridge Road, that will not be open tonight. We expect to open that at our next meeting on January twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-two. Roll call once more, hopefully it'll be quicker this time. John Goodwin, I am here, John Chris here, Kristen Nielsen.
Here.
Ian Radman.
Here.
Claire Tescorni is not here tonight, Ken Turner.
Here.
Nick Ward.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Falcon Act.
Here.
Excellent, okay. Item number one, New Canaan Library, as I was saying before, I first want to thank the New Canaan Library team for coming live. I know some of you are coming from a ways away, but we felt that it would be very important to make this a in-person dialogue. So that's much appreciated. I will also note that this is a regular meeting item, we will be taking no public input tonight. What I would like to do is read the approval. The conditions of the approval which has has to do with tonight's presentation, so item number. I'm sorry, no. We don't do points of order. Sir. 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 Sir, then you can take it however you want to take it, we're proceeding with this meeting. And please refrain from making remarks, thank you. We don't do points of order. Item number eight, within a hundred and twenty days, one twenty after the effective date of approval, the New Canaan Library shall work with the town planner and if desired by the commissioner, town planner, and external advisor, hired by the town and paid for by the library to present options to preserve appropriate portions of the existing library building older than nineteen thirty-seven. Appropriate items recommended by the Commission for Preservation could include the facade, pillars, and roof line of the pre nineteen thirty-seven buildings. Item number nine, the final preservation option plan shall be reviewed by the town planner and shall be brought back to the Commission for approval prior to the implementation of the plan. Ms. Oldham, the floor is yours. Okay, Mr. Rucci then.
Hi, David Rucci, I'm a member of the New Canaan Board of Trustees, I'm on the Building Committee as well, so I've asked to speak tonight and just because I've dealt with this commission a number of times before, I just felt it might be a little bit more streamlined as far as what we're presenting and all, all I want to do tonight is tell you what the library's done for the last hundred and twenty days, which is what this commission asked us to do. Could you put on the slide, please, Lynn? With me tonight are our architects, Mark Hertz, Hertzler, and Jim Childress from Center Brook, our president Bob Button's here, our owner's rep Paul Stone is here, and a lot of members of our Board of Trustees are also here with us this evening. You've already read the condition, so I won't go through that again, but I think that what the most important part about that condition is, is that this group, meaning the library group, recognized that as they were going through the process with this board as far as preservation goes or memorializing goes, that it wasn't enough for a lot of the board, the commission members here tonight. And we took that to heart and the approval that we received, you've seen that we've started moving forward on it, but we haven't stopped thinking about exactly what we need to do to satisfy this condition. So, you know, initially, the proposal that we came with was, you know, repurposing some stones, working around the perimeter of the fireplace, working with local artists, maybe setting up some sort of exhibit room, something that memorialized what the library had meant and what the library had looked like. We heard pretty clearly that that wasn't enough. There was even some comments about how they don't, you didn't want to see stonework or any sort of, you know, pavers with people's names on it. So what we ended up doing was talking to Center Brook about, well, how do we make this a little bit different? And if, Lynn, you can go to the next slide. Yeah, actually, well, that's the condition, yeah, start with the legs of building. So initially, what we tried to do is we took to heart exactly what the commission said, and it was important that you gave us that direction as far as keeping the facade, the pillars, the roof line, these were things that you wanted to see. So initially, what we tried to do is if you look at the site plan up onto the west side, we essentially tried to put sort of a legacy pavilion in that particular area. If you go to the next slide, Lynn, and you see that it's butted up against the gas station that happens to be sitting there. And essentially, what it shows is it shows the pillars, it shows the side, shows roof line, it essentially stacks right up next to the building on the Gulf Building to the other side. And it worked with our green and we were able to put a pathway there. So that was important to us, so people could come and see this particular building and enjoy it, it became sort of part of our campus. If you go to the next slide, please, this is a, this is the view from, what is that from Cherry? No, that was from, that was looking up from from the terrace, okay? So this next side is looking from the library itself, like the new library, what it would look like, once again. And then if you continue the next one. And this essentially was what it would look like from Cherry Street. So you see it sort of fits into that area of the back of the property, we still have a lot of work with the green. The green is, you know, incredibly important to this library team and what we're trying to do. And, you know, as we were going through this and we saw sort of what it looked like in this particular area, it made sense to say, well, can we do something more? Can we build sort of more of a building? And relocate it in sort of the same area that we, we have here. And really, for us, what it came down to is, could we do that and save the green? Would, would the green still be as integral part of our programming? Our community partnerships that we're gonna have there, our STEM programs, reading, I mean, that is the most important part of our application that came before us before, before you guys before. So what we asked the architects to do is, can you find something better, something that is a little bit more substantial to put sort of in that area, but still keep this green and its importance to our project? And essentially, that's what we're gonna present with to you all tonight through our architects is, you know, we gave them that direction to go do that at no small cost to the library in order to get that done. And we're gonna ask them to come up now and sort of show you where we would put this on this particular site that would allow it to really fit in with what the library is planning on doing with their new, new building. So with that, I'll just turn it over to to Mark and Jim, and they can walk you through the next slides as to what the building looks like. I would say at the end, I mean, what we're really looking for tonight is an approval of the condition, right, so that we can move forward and actually start development. So I just leave that out there for now, so that you understand that that's why we're here. Here's, here's the plans that we looked at, the proposals we looked at, this is what we ended up with, and we'd like to hear from you that this is something that satisfies the condition and we can start to move forward. So with all that, I'll, I'll send over to Jim.
Thanks, David. I'm Jim Childress, Principal of Center Brook Architects, nice to see all of you in person. I've seen you on Zoom, I'm here with my colleague Mark Herter, who's also in person, who I think you've seen on Zoom a lot. Lynn, do you forward things, is that how we? Let's step through here, as David said, what we were tasked with doing was looking at how to relocate and use the legacy building, next one. And what we focused on was this piece, which is primarily intact, at least the the lower wall and the right-hand side, the left-hand side, the corner is there, the cornice is there, those little windows, one of them exists, the other two are gone, they may be, the door to the director's office is kind of in there, they'd have to be recreated. And that back wall, of course, is not there, so we, we'd have to recreate that, so that's the piece we looked at. And as you can imagine, we've looked at this for, Mark and I have been at this for now eleven years, so we've, I've yet to hear anything that, anybody come up with an idea we haven't thought of yet. When Dave in the Building Committee said, could you look at putting it over here where the pavilion was, of course, Mark and I, the first thing we do is go, yeah, we could, but what about, what about? So we throw some other ideas out there, next one. Just to get the Building Committee's feelings about it, and there were sort of three main ones and variations on these, but that we looked at, go to the next one. The first, you know, we've always toyed around with something, pulling it down in this location, and I think the consensus we keep hearing is it's too far from the library to be used for practical. It's sort of an isolated piece for them. And also, somebody made the observation, the back facing the library is going to be the new part. So the really wonderful front that everybody sees, when you're in the library, you'd never see it, next. This one solved the problem of getting closer to the library, so it might be more useful, but again, it has the problem of the back is facing the library. And the really nice front is, of course, facing Main Street, so those driving down would see it. But it's kind of an awkward step up, and this grand stair going up to it, and how do we, do you get confused where the entrance was? And so through those conversations, next slide, it kind of came back to, you know, the best place is somehow working it in this area. One was to go orthogonally with the building, and then somebody on the Building Committee made the observation as we were looking at this, when you're in the main concourse of a new library, the lobby, the cafe, looking out the window, this, you just see the, the end of the legacy building that is not, not there, the one that we have to recreate. It's not really the butt end of the building, but it, it's not the old historic part, where, go to the next slide. Where we realized, if we made it parallel to the gas station, when you look, I've got renderings of it later, when you look through the concourse, the main lobby of the new library, you see the building at the end. And if you go out there right now, it's really rather close, you can see where that corner of the new building will be. And it's like, the new building is here and your legacy building is over there, it's that close. So it really kind of brings it all into concert, and I think that's something that Mark and I really wanted to achieve. We, we think of this as a campus, they're not individual buildings, they need to work together, you need to think about the spaces in between. One building has to make the other stronger, the spaces have to have a reason to be, they're not just, I don't know, green stuff filling up the space in between, it's something you can use. So we went to our landscape architect Stimson, and we started working hard about how do we use the space in between, next. And we explored a bunch of different ideas, next, and Building Committee, we got to a consensus of pulling it so that it, it was right next to the gas station, giving us a little more buffer and creating a bosque of trees, so that you can, it's in contrast to the green, that's more open and sunny, it's more of a shady space to sit, I'll show you renderings of that in a minute, and it also creates a barrier between the service area on the left and the green on the right. Next. Well, this was the, as far as we got with the details, we've, I don't know if you remember our early submission, we pulled the dumpster out up by the street, so it's a bit of a gateway behind a stone wall. So it's got an attractive back to it, but we've worked it out, the truck can go in and back out. And then the paving is flush with the, the gravel where the trees are, so it could ebb and flow, you have food trucks and, and the parking area and special events and sit in the shade. And then the legacy building becomes part of that, that whole composition, next. And so that's about, you start to see what the concept is and where it's located. The green gets slightly shorter, but we still maintain all of our, slightly narrower. But we still maintain the accessibility up both walkways from the corner of Main and Cherry, as well as up in the middle of Cherry, it just ramped up. And then to ramp into the legacy building would go up the back, probably be the least obtrusive way to do it. But there's probably a way to do it in the front as well, next. That's the view from inside the, you're in the cafe, the main lobby is behind you where the, the new book collection is. And you can see where that, that twist of the legacy building, you'd see the front to it. And then that one side and the grove of trees between the two, next. And this, to my mind, is the most compelling part, we've worked so hard to achieve, to, to maintain the program with the landscape. The new building, I, I think they play really nicely together, we've worked hard to sort that the legacy building is raised up on its podium like it is now, that extra height makes it work. If it's just, if you got rid of those steps, it would be too low. So there's kind of an investment to bring it up, so it works in with the other buildings, I almost feel like the new library is the garden wall, and this is the set piece on the side, it's actually rather elegant. And there's that, that beautiful space in between, it's much more intimate and in contrast to the, to the large lawn. I'm gonna sound like a student now, but I'm gonna say, I hope you like it, because I, I think it's had a lot of great ideas in it. Over eleven years of working on this, it's, there's a kind of elegance and grace to it that, that makes a lot of sense to my mind.
Questions for the team?
Chairman, I have a few questions, if I may, far away. If I understood you correctly, sir, this will have ADA access somewhere, could you go in a bit more detail, what's your thoughts on this?
Our, our thought right now is it would go up the backside. Between that and the, the legacy building and the gas station, we have a concept that would go in the front. And it would go up on the, starts on the left-hand side and arrives at the porch. And that gets to be kind of a, I mean, you'd have to add a new wall in front of it, there's an elegant way to do that.
So, but what space would there be between the back wall and the property line? Mark, of the Gulf Station?
Please step, Mr. Carter, please step to the podium.
Mark Herter from Center Brook, so the way we have it set right now is five feet off of the property line, so it is tight to the, to the property line on the backside. So we've looked at multiple options of ADA access to the building. Certainly have, as you can see here, landscaping in the front of the building. So if you remember in the earlier landscape sketches that we did, we looked at options for developing the court to the south, so between the service area and the, and the green, we have the option of being able to develop that court and create a ramp along the front or along the back. We, we have not explored that in detail yet, but we absolutely will have an ADA access point to, to the building.
We did think about putting it further in the ground, only a couple steps up, but to my point about the scale of it, it just in in relationship to the existing building, keeping it up a little bit higher seemed to be visually much stronger.
So the other important point that I'll make is that grade slopes from south to north, right? So it's higher on the south side of the building than it is on the north side of the building. So access with a ramp is easier from that south side.
And so behind the building, between the back of the building and the property line would be a walkway or a sidewalk.
Correct.
Leading into that, and there'll be a door. If I remember the drawing, the drawing looked like an X-ray, frankly, of the walls of the, of the older parts of the building. Part of the, I call it back wall of the nineteen thirteen building, no longer exists, has been gone for a while, when the nineteen thirty-six building was attached to it. What are your thoughts regarding what the back wall or the back wall facing the Gulf Station would look like as far as materials and so forth?
So we, we talked to a mover about the relocation of this building, and when we, when we do that, in order to be able to move it effectively, those walls have to be filled in prior to a move. They'd be filled in with, with concrete block in order to be able to secure the frame of the building and move it more manageably. So then we have the option on the outside, on the backside of that building, of either doing stone or, or parjing it or something else, because we are close, because we are planted, we assume that the stone would return and that the backside would be parched rather than stone.
Part, I had to tell me.
So stuck up.
Stuck up.
Correct.
So the part of the back wall of the nineteen thirteen building, which exists, that has a similar type of stonework to the front and sides of the building now?
So the, so the back of the wall, the back wall does not, well, it's buried right now, portions of it are buried right now within the JIP walls within the library.
Right.
So there may or may not be stone there, it appears from the depth of the walls that some of the stone may still exist. In any case, when we strip all that out, in order to be able to secure it before moving it, we're gonna fill in the gaps with concrete block in order to secure it, and then we'll decide how we, what we do once we get it on its new foundation in the new location.
And so if I could summarize it, be sure I'm getting this, is that the back wall in its entirety would look much different from the other three walls of the building and would not have the same kind of stonework?
As, as of right now, yes.
Right now.
Correct.
I mean, if there's existing stonework there, we take advantage of it, and it's part of the creative process.
Also, the question on the trees that are going to be put into the north and south of the building? What type of trees, but what would their mature height be and?
Still early stages, but we talked about honey locusts and, and limbing those up. Still very early stages of discussion, but Haley Park is the idea that, you know, that we talked about, the you probably know that plaza in New York. And we thought about that as the idea of the plaza between the two buildings.
I think the original or the rest of the approval specifies native plantings for the plantings that are there, so I would assume that would be consistent with any alterations.
I do remember all those discussions about that, we will absolutely look at that, yes.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bash. Hi, James Bash, is, is Brian Smith on the call, I don't see him. Okay, can he be brought forward so I can ask a question of him?
I'm here.
Okay, so Mr. Smith, James Bash, so on December ninth, you wrote a letter to the commission, I'm just gonna quote from the letter. The library has concluded of the options considered. The relocation of the entire building constructed in nineteen thirteen to the location that is shown in the company presentation best serves the interest, and you go on from there. I think the key words that I want to highlight here, because I think it's inaccurate, is the entire building constructed in nineteen thirteen. I think we were just shown in the presentation that we're only talking about roughly half of the building that was constructed in nineteen thirteen.
Yes.
Just the architect team, please.
Sure.
Yeah, the night, well, the part we're showing is the part that was built in nineteen thirteen, and then the, was it thirty-six?
Well, no, the element.
When the next piece was completely redone, and there are little remnants of something from nineteen thirteen, but the special walls on the end are, are later.
Can you go? Lynn, can you please pull up the presentation from the NCPA that we talked about on April fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one? That I think delineates much better the original architecture of the building.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bash, I don't mean to, I'm not sure why we're, we're bringing that up, and we're just here to talk about conditions that we're trying to satisfy, we're not going and relitigating through the preservations.
No.
I mean, and, and, and just, and just to be clear, I mean, in this particular case, we weren't asked to hold, keep the whole building, we were asked to go look at the facade, look for the pillars, try to do something more meaningful from this commission, I think that's what, what we've done here. I mean, we've gone from, you know, a reading book to essentially almost moving the entire building to the back, and, you know, I, I'm not trying to step on your question, I'm just saying that, in this particular case, though, we're just talking about satisfying the condition to do a better job with pillars, facades, and stonework.
I don't think you're understanding my point.
I, I'm not.
So if, if we get a letter saying that the entire building constructed in nineteen thirteen is gonna be preserved in one of these three options, I'm questioning the validity of that. And I like to examine some of the evidence to see whether or not the entire building that was constructed in nineteen thirteen is in fact gonna be preserved as Mr. Smith denotes, and so Lynn, could you please pull that up?
But even if that was the case, we don't have to do that, that's, that's not, that's not a part of the condition, right?
You don't have to do that, so let's just aside on a common set of facts, though. Is the common set of facts that only a portion, the front portion of the building is going to be preserved, or the entire building is gonna be preserved? What is your answer?
I believe it's the front and the side.
Great, so then, then you disagree with Mr. Smith, who says it's the entire building constructed in nineteen thirteen is gonna be preserved, you don't think that's relevant?
I, I don't think so, but only since that what we've brought so far to the commission has been what our plan is going to be for the condition.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I mean, if that's inaccurate, we're, we're kind of parsing a little bit here, because our, our application or what we're trying to do is satisfy the condition in this particular case.
So, Mr. Smith, are you now on the same page and we'll move on from here, that it's only the front portion of the building, not the entire building like you quoted? That is among the three options that you have presented.
I would make the, I would make the comment that I am losing some of my hair, although I didn't realize it was also gonna be split. But the, the issue is that it's the entire portion of the building as opposed to a pavilion, and I, in my letter, I also say as presented by the architect, so no one has said anything about it in any way being misleading, and I think it's very clear what we are presenting.
Fair enough.
Well, Mr. Bash, can we, can we just ask the team what, what's?
Sure.
Just ask them the question.
Go ahead. So what portion is being preserved, it's not the entire building, as I understand it, and I think the, the actual Taylorville.
No one really knows what part of nineteen thirteen exists.
This is, this is Dan Radman. If you call up the slide that Mr. Chris referred to as the X-ray, that is the nineteen thirteen drawing.
That's what I'm asking you to call that.
The one with the red box on it. Yeah. So that, the entirety of that building footprint in that drawing is the nineteen thirteen library. The issue that Mr. Bosch and personally I'm having is, for the last six months, we've heard a false narrative by the library's representatives that the nineteen thirteen, even here, that the nineteen thirteen will be preserved. It's a portion of the building is being preserved, not the entirety, and what that does, that false narrative lends sort of credibility to the presentation for all of the supporters of the library project who are opposed or partially opposed to the preservation effort. And they seem to think that you're satisfying the preservation effort by preserving the nineteen thirteen, when in fact, it's only fifty or sixty percent of it that is being preserved. So. Or relocated.
Do you wanna, do you wanna speak, I'm happy to.
Well, I mean, I, I think that Mr. Radman, where we've come from and where we ended up today is pretty significant. And, and I think that also the, the preservation groups, you know, I think they've done pretty well in this. I mean, all things being equal, I mean, you know that it didn't have it in situ, I know that was their main thing, that's the main thing that they keep talking about the entire time, is they wanted to stay in the same place. And what we have done, I think, a pretty darn good job about trying to bring as much of this building as possible, rebuild it, put it onto the campus, and looking at some of these pictures, I think it looks incredible there. And, and, and that's something that the library board had zero intention of doing before this whole thing started, and I, I think we've come a long way in that, and it, I, unfortunately, I don't think it'll ever be enough for the Preservation Alliance, and I have no ill will, and neither does the library have any ill will towards the Preservation Alliance. I mean, they, they do a good job at what they're trying to accomplish, but that's not the same, we're not on the same playing field, we, we, we're not putting it in situ, and that's what we've talked about a lot. I think that what we've done here has been pretty powerful to go from, you know, a couple reading books and and putting up some paintings and having people come in to talk about the old library to essentially a, a building that looks pretty much like the, the old library.
So, can I continue, I'd like to continue my questions unless you have more.
Me, no.
Yeah, I would like to.
Go ahead.
Clarify on the, on the slide that is up, so the front portion is what we are talking about tonight, that we are gonna preserve and move. That we've made clear. The back portion, which is in this slide, so the south wall. That we've made clear. The back portion, which is in this slide, so the south wall, which is to the left of the back portion of that does not exist. The north wall to the right does not exist. So um the in nineteen thirty seven, when the addition was made and subsequent additions after that, a number of those walls were removed. So there are no two reading rooms as shown in the original anymore. The walls that are in the center, which create the entry um continuous through and create that node in the center, those do not exist. The wall to the to the west, as it would be, the top of the page, portions of that remain. And piers on the on the north and south side remain. But they're buried within JIP walls and 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 plaster walls and that's really what exists. Our focus because of that is to use and preserve and move the front portion of this building and that's that's what we've done.
Okay, so in terms of what you feel like it exists, it actually departs pretty materially from what uh and cross key architects um felt like exists. So we hired this independent assessor, as you know.
Completely understand.
Since it's been a number of months, I think it's a good reminder for everyone in the commission and members of the audience looking at um as to what he said, because we we hired him because we wanted someone that didn't have any bias. It wasn't going to be the NCPA. It wasn't to be the library to make an assessment of what remains of this nineteen thirteen building. So what he said, it is not one hundred percent of what it originally was when it was built in nineteen thirteen in the thirties, but most of the original building is present. And many of its character defining features, such as the building's form, design, exterior envelope and materials, front portico, interior wall painting, wood flooring still exist. Also, fifty percent of the south wall, most of the west wall appear appear to be present based on the comparison of the current original floor plans. In my opinion, again, independent assessor, the building has enough character defining features left to make it culturally, educationally, economically and environmentally beneficial to the town and is therefore intact. So so with that in context.
I want to be really clear about what he said in that statement.
Okay.
When he said um north wall and south wall, what he meant was the wall that is within the rectangle, red rectangle. And even the west wall that he's talking about, there are two west walls, right? There is the west wall within the red rectangle and then there is the westernmost wall, which is beyond that that currently divides the gallery space from the children's room.
So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring up this slide, but frankly, why don't we just move on from it? Because the slides show something different than you're saying, because this is actually referring to that western half of the, I'll call it the western half of the building, the back of the building um that shows it actually fairly significant portion of the walls still remain. But I I want to move on because there's a couple more important questions uh I wanted to get through. I'm not sure I'm going to have a chance to deliberate later. Um so one is the removal. This is within the the plan of conservation and development. Um it says the removal or disruption of historic, traditional or significant structures or architectural elements shall be avoided or minimized. Did you guys and the library representatives take that guidance from the P O C D in mind? Again, removal or disruption shall be avoided or minimized of historic, traditional or significant structures. Obviously, there's a lot of people that feel it's a significant structure. How did you take that into in mind when you were coming up with three with the three options that you presented?
It's protecting the piece that's intact and making it more um just more lovely and tuning it up. I mean, the back part, I suppose we could recreate it. I guess that's what you're arguing. Start from scratch and try and unearth.
Now, that's not what I'm arguing, but go ahead.
Those walls, those walls don't exist, so we uh we didn't spend any time trying to recreate it. In fact, we don't have elevations of them. We did find an elevation of the south side and the red box. But 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 the part outside of the box, we, you know, we didn't spend.
But just to get back to the question, how is this minimizing disruption? When you're demolishing roughly half of the original nineteen thirteen building, whether once someone wants to say a lot of these walls are gone anyway, it is taking away, as you point out here, just the it's just taking that front red rectangle. How is this minimizing disruption of something that some people see as significant?
So so I will say this, that our presentation met um twelve of the the conditions of the P O C D.
Eleven, but okay.
Okay, um and in that, we are not required to meet every single condition. However, um in this case, what we are trying to do with this presentation is actually preserve and enhance the building, the historic building. There are there are countless examples throughout history of historic buildings that are moved, relocated, repositioned and for prominence or for use. Countless. Um I mean, if you think about a local example, downtown Wilton, that entire area, the historic area is recreated with historic buildings moved around, right? That's a local example, but there are countless throughout history of major buildings that are moved in order to be able to create um a campus like what we're talking about tonight. Our goal would be to be able to create a usable campus with a relationship between the historic building and the new building. And I think we've articulated that.
Those are fair points, but I what I would say, or I depart from you respectfully, is that the overriding philosophy of the plan of conservation development is to have an appropriate balance of conservation and development. That is a subjective interpretation and that's, you know, for us to determine what that is. But you can meet eleven of twelve conditions and if the overriding philosophy is us for us to figure out a balance between preservation or conservation and development, what does that look like? And I'll I'll leave it there for right now, because I wanted to just move to one other question. Sure. Did did the library uh at any point over the last four months or before the library application was submitted to this body, did it ever try to elicit feedback through correspondence from a broader broader set of this community as to whether or not this community between two direct choices, one would be preserving a meaningful portion or all of the nineteen thirteen slash thirty six building in C two or removing and and by doing so, having a smaller town green or the alternative being doing what you're proposing right now, which is keeping around half of the original structure and moving it somewhere else uh and having a larger green. What would be preferred between those two options? Has that that type of feedback ever been directly elicited from a broader set of the community beyond focus groups?
Um I mean, I've I've only been on board three years, so I'm not sure how far back they went on that. But um you know, I I think our answer to that is that we went to focus groups mainly. I don't think they they went out to the entire public for it. I mean, I think they tried to get as many people as they could uh within within those particular focus groups.
Why not? It would have been a fairly simple thing to do. You could do it through either a mail or internet technology. Why not try to get more feedback from the broader community in the design phase?
We did in the very beginning. Um I'm going back nine and ten years ago. We had a series of public workshops. There was a diverse group of people, including people from the Preservation Society on those those workshops as we looked at how to uh how to develop this. Uh there was a sentiment interest in somehow doing something with this building. But I have to say, having led that and being there through that whole thing, the consensus was it wasn't that big a priority.
So focus groups mainly nine or ten years ago. Okay.
Nine or ten years ago with about about fifty or sixty people and then when Lisa came on board, there was another series.
But but I have more to add to that, Mr. Bash, which is we. So as we've discussed at length in this process and elsewhere, this was a private project until less than a month ago, when the town very happily for us contributed money to it. When you're fundraising for a big building project like this, you get it, you take advice from experts. You get a set of drawings and you start sharing them with people to see if they're interested in investing. We had ostensibly thirty million plus to raise all by ourselves. So we, of course, shared this with well over a thousand people in New Canaan. And we had these conversations and we didn't say, here's this plan and this plan, because at the time we didn't have this condition that we were dealing with, but we shared very clearly, including with many people on this commission, the plan that we were putting forward. And we had discussions about the fact that we weren't planning to include the the legacy building and had those discussions with people.
Okay.
And as a result of those one thousand individual meetings, we raised seventeen million dollars from people who were interested in contributing to this project and ensuring that a new library for this community, a new piece of civic infrastructure for this community was going to get done. We had no expectation of funding from anywhere else except from philanthropy at that time. And so that is why we went through that process with the advice of good counsel.
Yeah, and because this is a very much a community based project and I recognize you're trying to elicit input from all stake or stakeholders. Um there was different ways of doing that and um you guys chose this way.
Mr. Bash, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we we need to keep this.
Fair enough.
To what tonight's agenda is. Wait, let me finish real quick.
Yep.
We spent, I don't know, seven meetings. So we we there's a there's a there's a there's two conditions at hand tonight and we really need to stick to that.
Okay, so I have one more question then uh in this regard. How would part of the nineteen thirteen building uh this front part, um how is it going to be moved? What are the risks in moving it? Can you move a complicated piece of masonry like this easily? What are the costs? What are the risks?
So I'll I'll leave that to someone else, uh because yes, it's very easy and we know all of that and I'll defer to Paul or Mark.
So I've I've dealt with moving a number of buildings. Um there are a lot of experts out there that move buildings every day, all day. Um we met with one and we were very clear about expectations of of moving this building. Um and we walked through every aspect of that, how they would secure it before moving it and then how they would move it and the steps required in order to be able to do that. We're absolutely confident that this building can be moved. I've had experiences with that before, both wood frame and masonry. And I'm confident that the right um company can move this building.
Which company would it be? Is it your general contractor, Turner Construction? Still, is it still current Turner Construction? And they would, would they be the ones involved in uh the the movement of it?
So Turner Wood uh would be the CM on the project. And like any other sub, they would work with them in order to be able to do this. So the we have to prepare a foundation in order to be able to move the building. And then once you do that, then you secure the building and you put beams underneath the building, you lift it up and you move it. So it would not be Turner doing the moving of the building. No.
Okay, what would be the cost of moving it as opposed to leaving it in C two?
Um just, this is Paul Stone on Carp Associates. I'm uh the consultant for the library. Um we don't have a design. Typically, what happens is you 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 have a design from which you get actual real numbers. We can speak in general terms, but um you know, there's a certain we we would work towards getting a number um to you. That's not really part of this evening's conversation. Um but we know it can be done and to sort of answer the earlier question uh regarding buildings that are that are moved, this is a relatively small building, especially a masonry building. It's done by people who do this all the time, much larger masonry buildings, so we know it can be done. Um and that could fit into um it could fit into the site and we know that that's um it's a doable thing.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Chairman, I have some follow up questions if I may.
Sure.
Um you mentioned digging about foundation. Um how much the foundation will be visible?
So similar to what is there today.
Slope, so I assume something.
Yeah, slopes, but similar to what's there today, there is a portion of the foundation that is visible. So if you if you recall, the building has a a brick coursing, which is at the floor line and then everything below that is the basement. We would treat that in the same way. So anything below that brick coursing, we would redo in stone to match.
Well, there's a currently a basement under the uh.
There is.
And is that?
A portion, a portion of the.
Portion is as a cellar.
Not not all of it.
Uh are you contemplating that a cellar would exist under the building when it's moved if it?
So in order to have uh a new um repurposed building, in order to be able to feed mechanical plumbing, everything else, we need space below. So yes, we would have, whether it's a full basement or crawl space, we would have space below. Yes.
More of a not something that uh is going to be used by the public is what I'm hearing. It'd be something for mechanicals and so.
Correct, yeah.
And um you're anticipating using the building and having it plumbed and heated and everything else?
That is the intention.
Okay, thank you. And I I'm moving buildings. I still remember when the uh uh Black Island Lighthouse was moved. It was a pretty big building, a brick and lighthouses are tall and tippy. Now, that was a tricky one. They seemed to do it intact, so uh I I remember one building was Noel Grange Hall in Vermont that was moved by Oxen. About forty Yoka Oxen, you know, across the road. Yeah, probably not here. But uh I I have just, I have seen it done.
Yeah.
But you need people who just do this for a living.
Absolutely.
Uh otherwise, not a good idea.
It can go bad quickly.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Um given the limited footprint of what's being relocated of the nineteen thirteen, essentially the two rooms and the vestibule at this front portion, uh what do you foresee the program of this building being once it's relocated?
I think it's really important and I suppose as an architect, you would agree that one designs a program for a building based on appropriate mission driven use. We just designed a very large building based on all of our mission driven needs. This is additional to that. And I think it's very important that we spend time and thought to come up with an appropriate program for that building. Given we're talking about twelve hundred square feet, I'm sure we will come up with a very mission driven program for the building. But I think to shoehorn a program into a building that we hadn't contemplated using at the beginning of this project would be inappropriate and wrong headed completely.
Exactly the answer I was looking for. So um you would then agree, coming from an architect, that had the consideration been given originally during the initial stages of the design of the library to keep the nineteen thirteen institute in its entirety and design a new library around that building institute, engaging it, um complimenting it, um working with the context of the historical artifact would have been a lot more prudent and easier solution than us sitting here now and to use your words, shoehorning a program and a building onto a site, which is essentially just slicing in half a piece of history that's in town.
No, I wouldn't agree.
Oh, you wouldn't agree? Okay. That would have been the prudent thing. It's what I keep saying during all these presentations yourself and the library board had a missed opportunity. A very big missed opportunity here.
Dan, I I think you're very quickly cutting to, I don't want to get in a big argument with you. This is a very complicated process, design process over many years. There are layers that you were ignoring and.
Oh, no, no, I'm not ignoring them. I I understand them completely because I mentioned this during the initial meeting, which was back in May or June. The the current design of the library as well as the green is really a matter of dollars, right? You're you're looking at.
It is not less expensive to do the direction you're going. It's in fact, we've we've explored it. It's more expensive to try and attach it. The scale of things, I've talked to you about this. The scale, the bigger building against this is awkward, the phasing layers. There there's there's a whole host of complications that we've had to deal with.
You've done it. There are three projects on your website. You've done it.
Yeah, because they made sense in those places. It didn't make sense here. We very intelligent people spent a lot of time thinking about this, pricing it, looking at alternatives. If you'd like, we can come back and I guess go through the ten years of uh thought that we went through to come up with where we are. I.
It's just, it's staggering to to think that this town, and I was here when the P O C C D was written. Kent Turner, who's on the Zoom, is also a commission member, wrote the village. Kent Turner, who's on the Zoom, is also a commission member, wrote the village district guidelines, all of which were put together as an effort a decade ago to help in the preservation of artifacts in town. It was driven originally in the early 2000s by the destruction of a lot of mid century moderns. And that initiated an effort in town to create guidelines and rules in town by which historic structures could be preserved. And we're talking about a, a building in town. I mean, it's a small town. We have very few historic, truly historic structures in town and
We're not taking it away.
You're slicing it in half and
We're not, the other half does not exist.
That's not true.
I'm sorry. You all, I, I, I don't get, you all haven't walked through it. Those two walls marked that they do not exist. You've got, you've got some remnants of the back. Yes, you could argue to recreate it. I'm not
Yeah, it could be recreated.
But Why, I mean, why aren't we keeping the 1970s? I'm not sure I understand that. We could have go down that
I mean, at this point, just tear it down, tear it down and live all of the commission, Ms. Oldham, the board, live with the legacy of destroying a piece of history in town.
Mr. Radman, I'm being repetitive.
I'm sorry.
Try to keep it to the items.
Yes.
We, we, we've, we've been through this discussion.
I understand. And I hate to tell you, I told you so. Right? We had option A and option B four months ago. And I told you unless specific criteria were given in terms of the guidelines by which we were looking for options, we would get something like this. And it was a hail Mary tossing, we're going to trust them. They're going to come back to us with something satisfactory.
Yeah, questions for the applicant.
Yeah.
I think I may, I may be taking a different approach from some of my colleagues on this commission. But we spent, I don't know how many meetings where we did go through discussions like this. And we ended up when we approved the main library, new library building, when we approved that, we did make the condition that some portion of the legacy library would have to be retained somewhere. And we did not require it to be in situ. Clearly, at that time, when we made this condition, it wasn't going to make the library fully happy. They weren't going to pop corks with that condition. And the preservation group, they were not going to be fully happy with that condition. But the chairman read what the condition is. And I think where we came out, or at least my thinking at the time was that at least we will retain or the library will retain a visual view of the 1913 building principally, and I think we use that language, the facade, the roof line and the pillars, the things that are sort of distinctive and appear in New Canaan photos. So it's, I don't, I don't believe the condition that we imposed on the library ever said that the library had to retain a full building or even create a functional purpose for the legacy building. It was more retaining a visual aspect so that the town would see and memorialize what we now see, which is the basically the facade. And I think that's what we have sort of asked you to come up with, which I must say, I think you have done a, a pretty good job. In some sense, you've gone beyond what I had contemplated, you probably would come up with, that you might come up with a facade against the gas station fence. And that would be it. But you are creating really not only the facade, but a, a building which will have some presumably some functional purpose, which as has been explained, you'll sort of work out and, and make as best use of it as possible. So I, I don't think we should be trying to rehash what was done in a number of meetings months ago. That's sort of where I am.
Hey, other commissioners, commissioners on Zoom, questions?
Nope, I'm fine.
I had John just too quick.
Mr. Herring.
Sure. So I think you've addressed the, the ADA and the program question. Thanks, Tim, for raising that. I had the same question earlier. So as one of the discussion points that we had earlier in, you know, one of the third, sixth or 10th meeting that we had was the idea of the stewardship of this particular structure. And so I think we haven't talked about the, the program in detail, but I think what we're hearing you say, and I just want to clarify it, is that the library would adopt this as part of the campus, you know, ma- maintaining it, heating it, stewardship of that building moving ahead in, in that form. Can we just clar- clarify that?
I absolutely can. So obviously everyone knows it's privately owned by the library. We own it today. If you all agree that this is the way to go, we absolutely own this project, literally and figuratively. I've spoken to the bank. We've opened up a fund for the legacy building so that all the people who care so deeply about this building can start to contribute to ensuring that we can get this done in a timely fashion. So we own it in every sense of the word. And once we're clear that this is where we're moving forward to, we will do that.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. And then so one of the things that, that I was really interested in was the positioning of the building on the, the green and you know, if you look around town, you see buildings like our train station and you see buildings like the studio up on the historic preservation campus. And the nice thing about the train station is you had a building that was basically taken from ground level and then raised and then people walk through it. So my children walk through it and appreciate it every day. And it's an adaptive reuse. I mean, I live in a 125 year old building myself and we use it each day and my kids see it. So I was curious, when you put the building against this particular corner of the green, the one thing I've never seen is anyone sit on the front steps of our current library. Never even seen people walk in the door most of the time candidly. People walk through the back. So when you've looked at the way this positions on the green and the way you kind of activates the front facade, do you see how that plays into the green and like, would there be, you know, is it kind of a de facto podium? Is it a de facto like, you know, speakers visit, like, do you see it kind of playing into that programming and the way you look at that?
I think it's a great question. Lynn, would you mind putting up the last slide again for us so we can all be looking at this as I speak? So I think it's a really good point, Mr. Herring, and, and one that I hadn't fully thought of, but I think you are absolutely right. I can tell you because we have people counters on the doors that 10% or fewer of those who enter the building enter through those front doors. You're absolutely right. I think personally, when I look at this image, and especially with the way it's been raised up to be a similar height off the ground, the way it is today and not flat on the ground like some other images that are circulating around town. I think you are absolutely right. It gets this beautiful front lawn coming down to the green. I think it honors this building in a new and interesting way and creates an opportunity for the building itself to be a focal point on that green. What might happen there? I absolutely can imagine some sort of speaker's corner type events happening there using that front steps in a way that, that would be really interesting. Certainly a lot of activity on that green is what we expect. And I think this presents us with new and different exciting opportunities to use the front of the building as well.
Thank you. And then the last question is just in the materials. I think we focused, I think we're talking about the masonry, but I don't know how you can articulate this, but you know, the Palladium windows that face the, the north, I suppose. Are you thinking of, you know, using wood windows there? You know, we wouldn't want to see aluminum or inconsistent materials that aren't respectful of that positioning?
Yes. Having worked with the library for 11 years now, second director, I think the third board chair, I can say there's a consistency about doing things right. And I think that's where it will go. And it's the, our direction was to look at this and start pricing what it would take to do it properly. You know, good insulation, replacing the windows, which means changing all the trim on the inside. It's all those layers. The columns are fake. The roof is fake. You know, it's, it's to bring it back to its original state. That's the goal. What we do on the sides that don't exist, that's, you know, it's, you know, do you try and replace the stone in kind? Or do you do something more modern? I think you can argue that both ways.
So James, are you all secure?
Just last question on the five foot. How, how much is, how close is the, the garage on, on, on the property line versus, are they closer than that?
The fence is five feet and the garage then is another 10 feet, I think, another five.
So about equidistant between the two buildings that, these are via the property line? And would that require any condition from us?
Depending on whether we develop it in this particular spot, we may have to come back with a text change to allow for, say, you know, a historic building to be closer. You know, I don't know what the language would be as of today, but you may have to come back and make a change to the text for this zone in order to put the building where we want to put it. But that's not, right now, I can't say that's exactly what we're going to do, but it, it is a possibility. But we would, if that's the direction that this board wants us to go in, that's when we'll come back with a fully developed plan as to like, well, here's where it is. Here's where it's going to sit. Here's what we may need additional varying of that particular text. Or we may have to move further back as per the zone, right? We'll just have to look at it. Okay, thanks.
So James Vasch again. So there's a question for you, Mr. Rucci and Ms. Oldham as well, if she wants to contribute. I'm curious after this, the commission approved the application and there was four months to discuss options, how much the option of just again, the front part of the building, but keeping in, in C2, how much of that was considered? And I asked that question in the context of what you're always hoping to do, I feel like, is try to preserve some aspect of, or try to have some sort of balance between old and new. And I think that's really what the philosophy of POCD is, conservation and development. And so if I, I would have hoped to have seen in these options, at least an in situ option on, for the front part of the building, trying to strike a middle ground between the disparate parties here. And maybe there could be a little bit more alignment whenever you decide in the negotiation says, yeah, it came out of that deal. I didn't get exactly what I wanted, but you know, the, the accommodation I made, I think is somewhat reasonable if I'm really considering all stakeholders and disparate views. So please stop to that.
We did not consider anything in situ.
Why not?
Because that's, you know, from day one, that's what we came in with, was that we weren't going to keep it in situ. I mean,
But why?
Because that's not what the way the plan developed. That's not the way we raised money. Our, a lot of our plan has to go back to the green and the program and we're running from the greens. And this is something that we discussed, you know, at length with this commission in the past. I mean, we weren't going backwards. We were going forwards. And that, I mean, I, that's the only answer I have to that.
I, I asked also the context, and I think this will be further fleshed out tonight, that if you did keep at least the front portion of the 1913 building in C2, you would still have something like over 0.4 acres of town green to potentially use.
Wouldn't you have a, a building right in the middle of it?
No, I'm saying 0.4, 0.4 acres to the west of the, that what would remain in the 1913 building, 0.4 acres to the gas station abutting property line. And so the question I would have, if you could please answer, is if that is, is in fact the case, and you can disagree with the acreage or you might not know the acreage. But my point is that there would still be, my mind, plenty of town green left if it did remain in C2 to hold any number of events. And we would have had a town green that would be much bigger than the vast majority of our surrounding towns. Why wasn't that potentially enough in terms of what events would be precluded from happening by not having this larger town green?
So I think, I think there's a whole lot of engineering that has to be discussed here and, and not focusing on library programmatic use of the green. And I think there are any number of people here that can speak to all of the issues around why that is not a sound plan from an engineering and architecture point of view.
Well, it's mo- it's a multi-layered issue and you can, I guess we can agree to disagree. It, it was too far away to be really functional as part of the library. There was that issue. The issue came up about then the new library is looking at the back of this building rather than the front. That was a downside. We ran into issues with, we've just barely made that path accessible, which we really wanted from the corner. That was a really tough early challenge to us. That was important to a large group of people that we were working with anyway. Some of the other, some of the other, they're always practiced. Oh, it was the slay of the land too. It's that slope from the top down rather than having it flat and going back towards the gas station and drop down, which you could do, but you wouldn't have the slope lawn. So you can, you can argue maybe in your opinion, you would do it differently, but
I would have hoped for more of a middle ground, but again, what's specific?
It's not really a middle ground.
What specific programming capabilities, it's, it's subjective. I grant you that. What specific programming capabilities cannot, could not be done? You know, in, in your current iteration that, that, you know, that would have been to be able to, to have been done before.
It, it's a nice, how do you, how do you control it? Who goes over there and supervises it? It's a little bit easier if it's, and maybe it's subjective, but you know, it's from here to there versus whatever the distance is there. I know it gets to be sort of a barrier, but that was, that was one of, one of the real issues.
So I'll just talk a little bit about design for a moment and your question about specific program.
Yeah.
So if you look at this image, the lawn slopes from south to north, right? A natural amphitheater. And so if you set up a stage, if you'd like, on that north side at the edge of the bioswale, it's a natural amphitheater for people to use. I talked about this at length in a number of our meetings. When you put that building in place, you change everything about the green and the lawn, right? You are then facing toward the west if you want to use that space. Slopes still south to north, or you regrade completely, completely pick up the wall on the north side along Cherry, which doesn't work from a pedestrian standpoint at all. So there are practicalities about the way in which you use a green, depending on whether the building is there or not. And frankly, it doesn't work in that case. I know there are a lot of
You're saying, just so I understand, and I apologize, you're, you're much more of an expert in this than, and the, you know, gradations than I am. So are you saying because of the grading, largely because of the grading of the town green, that that's the reason?
So, so what I'm saying, I mean, frankly, we can make anything work.
Right. That's what I don't understand.
Absolutely can. But what happens is the natural grade, you're still bound by each street at the edge of the property, right?
Okay.
And when, when it slopes, and it even does that currently from south to north, it, and although the building is in the location, you have a stone wall along Cherry Street that is a certain height. If you were to take the building, leave it where it is, and you think about the corner of Cherry and Maine currently, the amount of stairs and the steps that are there and the walls that are there. And it still slopes up considerably from the wall to the front of the building.
Okay.
So if you carry that all along the elevation along Cherry Street, you end up with a sloping site that is facing toward the back of the building on that west side. It's, it's, it, it, it changes the nature of the building. It changes the relationship of the site to the building. And frankly, it's not deferential to leaving it there.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I think my, my, my rebuttal to that would be, I would have much more concerns about the level of noise pollution from where it's being situated than, you know, a slight slope.
Okay.
Mr. Turner, did you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Kent Turner. I'm a little troubled by the, the location, the proposed location. And I just want to bring to everybody's attention
And I just want to bring to everybody's attention some issues that you might explore. The, um, you know, the, the underground tanks for the gas station are right, I think very close to where you're proposing your basement. Have you done any soil testing? Do you know if you're going to have to remediate soil? And have you anticipated the potential cost for something like this? And what I'm getting at is, um, i- if this is a polluted site in that area, are, is the building going to be moved somewhere else? Uh, what, what, what would be your approach to mitigate this maybe potential problem?
So I'll just answer, we've done a number of, of soil borings of geotech and soil samplings and groundwater samplings throughout the site. As you know, construction is underway. There are some contaminated soils, excuse me, on the site already, which we're dealing with on a regular basis. Some of those, the majority of those are really from debris that was on site. So if you remember, there are a number of buildings that were on site. That debris was below grade. We had to remove it. Some of those soils are contaminated. We have to deal with that pretty much every day. There are borings and there are groundwater samples for the area near where we were talking about. And I'll just remind you that the children's library currently right now is very close to that. We're going to be excavating in order to remove that because there is a basement close to where the edge of that is. So excavation is going to happen there regardless. If we have to deal with soil, we'll deal with it in the same way that we are every day currently.
Okay, good. Um, my next question is on the, the facade. And I think I understood that you're proposing stucco. You know, this is a historic building. It deserves the integrity of stone or something a little more than an inexpensive and perhaps the least expensive material, stucco. Um, I ask that you reconsider that and try to make this building as historically intact as possible. And to, you know, go that extra distance so that, um, you know, this building is not just being placed on this site to become a buffer between the gas station and the green. You know, make it a historical structure that it is and bring back some texture, some, some integrity to it. And not just find the least expensive solution.
Yeah. So to clarify, Kent, you do know that we were talking about only the west side when we were talking about the stucco, correct?
Is that, I've understood it to be the side that fronts the property line by the gas station.
Correct. Yeah.
Right. And go ahead.
Uh, no, I just wanted to clarify, that's the only side. So we'd have stone to match the existing on the north, south and east sides. It would wrap the corner. And then what we talked about currently was stucco on that, um, on that west side.
But, you know, I mean, let's take the handicap access, for example, ADA, you know, I'm going to e- enter that building, um, kind of, you know, the back door. It's, it, it doesn't really meet the spirit of ADA. Um, and the appearance certainly doesn't reinforce that, you know, I'm, you know, an equal citizen to an able-bodied person that gets to, um, you know, enter this building.
Absolutely right. Point, point taken.
I think you really need to be serious about making this building three-dimensional, all elevations match and that it does bring back the character. I mean, I think that's what you're trying to achieve.
Correct. Yeah. Point taken.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I had one, one or two questions. Some of disparate ones. Can you question the fence between the gas station? That is your fence or their fence?
So the wood fence that is there, the wood, yeah, the wood fence that is there today is right on the property line.
It's kind of ready, sorry to say.
Agreed. I, I think you made that point when we made.
Yeah, it's not the nicest.
It's not the nicest fence. Correct.
Uh, what I'm getting this is that sometimes fences are about half a foot inside someone's property line and it's their fence and so forth. And so, um, depend, it can affect how much space you have between the building and the property line. And therefore access to the ADA is where I'm going with this. And trying to explore whether, you know, how much real estate you could have to, to maneuver perhaps a I'd say wheelchair, but it could be one of those, uh, you know, electric powered carts and so forth.
Sure. So, yeah, so as you can probably tell, these are early concepts. There's a lot to figure out. Some of which is the property line, the fence, the access, um, and things like that. So you're absolutely right. We will take a very careful look at the edge of the property, at the relationship and the access to the building. It's a, it's a great point.
Yeah. Uh, also the slope in that area is okay for?
So as I said, the
Powered wheelchair.
Uh, yeah. So the site slopes advantageously, quite honestly, south to north. So access, if you can imagine as it slopes away, if you come from the high point and, and come up to the entrance, it's a shallower ramp than if you were coming from the Cherry Street side. So yes, we will definitely be able to get there.
And on the interior, can we move to the, I'm sorry, I have a better word for this, but sort of the x-ray picture of the, of the building with all the walls? Uh, had a question on that, sort of be Lynn.
Are you talking about here, the floor plan? Are you talking about the 3D view from?
The, uh, interior where it shows all the walls. It was like the first or second picture. Is she?
The plan layout.
Here, no. Yeah, extra one. Keep going.
Yes.
It's more towards the, you know, keep in that direction. I think it's.
Second slide.
That's it. So, uh, looking at the, uh, part of the buildings in the red box, um, there are some interior walls. And I'm talking about the, the back wall on the west, call it's northwest side that I'm putting that to the side, but some of the interior ones, are they structural, non-structural, could be kept? Does there's struck value to them or anything like that you could share with us?
So, so it's a masonry building in, in which, um, many of those walls are bearing. Uh, we've been up in the attic. We've been in the basement. Some of those walls carry through both to the basement as well as to the attic. Timber frame roof on top of a masonry building. So some of those walls are in fact bearing. We'd have to do some more investigation, but some of those would absolutely be kept. Or if we took some of them out, then we would carry structure across, which it spans 20 feet, easy enough to do in order to create an open space if you want to.
Um, also, um, I actually had a note here, which Mr. Mr. Was leading originally with us. When you made the stucco, I meant on the back, which Commissioner Turner picked up on rightly in my opinion, but, um, you know, I tend to be a fan of, um, natural, natural indigenous landscaping and also natural materials, including fieldstone. And I'm sure stucco quite seems to me. Uh, and so it may not necessarily be stone that completely matches the rest of the building, but there's some brick in that building too, and other, it's called natural materials broadly defined, something other than aluminum, stucco, which, you know, may be very appropriate, but I think just sort of a, it's not meant to be sort of, sort of a cheap and cheerful back of the building is sort of not something I would be thrilled with.
Point taken.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, what I'm hearing is, um, if, if the commission did approve this, it sounds like it would be agreeing to address the fence issue as well as the materials issues on the side to the building. Is that correct?
We would.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, commissioners. Not tonight. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Simpson, we're taking no public input tonight. Okay, commissioners, would you like to discuss this and consider a vote tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly would like, I always like moving with all deliberate speed and to the extent we can reach a decision tonight, I would be in favor of that. As long as the prudent, thoughtfully discussed one. I would concur hardly.
Actually, Mr. Chris, before you start, um, everybody's comfortable with that. With what specifically? Voting tonight, having a, having a discussion and having a vote. Everybody comfortable?
Yes.
Would, uh, would Mr. Bosch be seated for that vote considering?
And that was my next step.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Bosch is seated for Mr. Williams. That'll be continuation of how we handled, um, the evaluation of the application. And Mr. Herring, you will be seated for Mr. Scornia tonight. Mr. Herring, please affirm that you listen to all meetings either in person or the tapes.
I can affirm I listened to each and every meeting.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
Um, I'll do, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, um, accept the proposal as put forth by New Canaan Library for the relocation of a portion of the historic building in the, uh, location where they have suggested. I would also, um, make a proviso that the, make my directions right, the western wall, not be stucco and would be in some sympathetic, natural, uh, material of stone and or brick uh, that is consistent with the design of, and of the rest of the building.
And did you want to address the fence as well, Mr. Cruz?
The fence, the fence, I'm, I would like to, I'm wondering whose fence it is and whether, whether they can do anything about it. Uh, and this is why I posed the question, you know, whose fence is it? And I got a, you know, kind of, we're not sure, you know, it could be right on the property line and they may not even know who put it up, but.
We, we could state if they do have control of the fence or you can, you're making the motion not.
No, it's a fair, fair point. Um, I would include, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, the, uh, to the extent it is legally capable of doing so, the, I think that'd be the best way to state it, the, uh, library would, uh, uh, remove the current dilapidated fence and replace it with a, uh, similar, really wooden fence. Uh, all wooden fence, uh, of, of similar height and design. I think that that would cover it. Thank you, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Ward, discussion of the motion.
I want to be sure that the motion correctly identifies the plan presented by the library. I mean, they had several options. So is there a, and how do we clearly identify that this is the one we're talking about?
Yeah, um, thank you. Let's be more, let me be even more precise that the, um, this would be, let me get the exact number they have up there, uh, might be helpful. Someone could keep scrolling through. That would be.
If I may clarify.
I'm sorry, we, we've closed the hearing, so we can't take her in, but I apologize.
Right, it's the, that was that one that is option. It's numbered.
What Lynn, what?
I believe it's option three C.
Three Charlie. Yes, that's the one that's, um, where the building is, uh, the walls are parallel to the property line as opposed to somewhat of an angle of the property line. So it would be, uh, option three C in specific. I, I hope that addresses your, your issue, Mr. Ward.
Okay, that's the option I'm seconding.
Three C, exactly. Okay, we're in agreement. Good. Thank you, sir.
Further discussion of the motion. Well, you know, look at James Vasch, I think it's at least important to mention some of the things that are part of the public record that weren't discussed tonight. So there was a presentation up on our site. I believe it was from the NCPA that went through, uh, their option. And I think there, to the extent people don't have a chance to see it yet, or the audience didn't have a chance to see it yet, I think there's some interesting ideas that are, uh, show what I consider to be a pretty potential balanced solution. And a win-win situation for the library and for people that are more concerned with preservation aspects. One of those interesting acts, aspects architecturally was on the west side of the 1913 building. Presumably the 1913 building would be retained in C2 and the 1936 building would be demolished um, as a concession. That there would be a glass folding door. And what that glass folding door would essentially do is, um, open up more opportunity for some of the programmatic things that the library is representing as being very important in this application, which totally understandable and I recognize, and I think would benefit the community. So I think having that glass revolving door, which architecturally, I don't think it was maybe outside of Dan and, and Ken, maybe not too, not too many of us are aware of. Even an option, um, I, I think, uh, is going to be to the benefit of the library programmatically. Also wanted to say, and I know this is going to be, we'll go back and forth on this a lot. I'm still thinking of this from the perspective of what our charge is. And, you know, my, my understanding of that from the P O C D said our charge more than anything is to find an appropriate balance between conservation and development. And I know that's a very subjective thing. What's an appropriate balance? But, you know, I look at the three options considered tonight. And to me, they kind of seem a little bit more like token gestures to preservation or conservation. It's the, the, each option strikes me as being an afterthought and not an integral piece of what this application wants to, you know, should be. If it really fully realizes its potential of balancing both old and new conservation, development, looking forward, but also respecting the past. And also respecting that these are really, this is a divisive issue. It's like we're, we're on separate sides of the room here. And the audience can see that. Can we find some sort of reasonable middle ground? What does that look like? So it might not be the 1930, 13 and 36 building as is in C2. And it might not be what I consider, and other people disagree, and I understand that and respect that. What I consider to be a little bit more of a token gesture to conservation and preservation, certainly much better than, you know, where we started, a coffee book and some stones along a sidewalk. But is it possible that as commissioners, we can take our charge in that overriding philosophy of the P O C D, try to balance old and new, try to have each side can say, you know what? I'm conceding more than I want, but I can understand how we arrived at that. And at least come up with the idea of, um, having a significant portion of the 1913 building in C2. Is it even possible to get the, the front portion of the building discussed? And I totally disagree with Mr. Smith that it's splitting hairs. It's not splitting hairs. What I'm potentially saying is that maybe a meaningful middle road is, uh, also not including the back half of the 1913 building. My preference, Mr. Chairman, would definitely be to be preserving the whole 1913 building in C2. Cause I think programmatically, there's still going to be many opportunities, but the town green, that's going to be around point four acres to the west, on the western side of, uh, the 1913 building to have a whole litany of, of programming features. So that would be my preference, but I'd love to arrive at something that might smack of a middle ground. And I think at least maintaining the front portion of the building in C2, which I was really disappointed to hear, was barely even considered or not considered at all. Um, and that there wasn't broader community feedback to trying to get a sense of one versus the other. Do you want a larger or smaller town green? Do you want the 1913 building and how these two things can potentially coexist in a way that's palatable for most? And, you know, at least want to have a discussion and trying to fit a middle ground before we come up with going head with one of these options that I think many would say, um, they'd rather have nothing at all than this.
Mr. Chairman, I would make one observation that, um, if the, uh, commission in its, uh, in its wisdom decides to, uh, support the motion that made, Mr. Ward has seconded as the applicant.
As the applicant has, has mentioned, there may be a need down the road for this commission to make some adjustments of text amendment and so forth, such as setbacks and perhaps even a number of square feet of soil that needs to be moved in order to create a proper foundation for the building. And so those things may be coming to, in front of this commission and that if we do, in our wisdom, decide to support the motion, those things are probably going to be part and parcel of a final decision that I think we want to think a few steps ahead, that those things are going to show up. And perhaps other ones we haven't thought about yet, should we decide to move forward and approve this motion? So just want to keep that in mind for all the Commissioners. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anybody else?
Well, just to complement the library on their investment in this project, I mean, I think the earlier presentation really focused on the new structure and the programming of the new structure, but given the charge that we presented to you 120 days ago to take on an additional incremental cost of, of moving a structure and preserving it and adopting a program for it is a significant change from your position where you did not initially intend to use the structure. I appreciate that that design element. And I, I do think, you know, keeping the large programming aspect of the green allows for a lot more flexibility to use it in different ways, just like Bryant Park in the city is used in different ways. Just like many adjacent greens are used in, in public structures. So I think it's an excellent addition to the town, respectful as the train station is to its historic elements, but also you know, an adaptive reuse where our, you know, our kids are going to be out there playing in the green and able to look up at the history that otherwise would, wouldn't be there. So I appreciate that. I, I know it's not exactly everything, you know, with the lead paint on it and, you know, the, the original stuff that was there 100 years ago when it was structured, when it was built. But I think when you look at what we did with the the town hall here where we preserved the front end of it and we created the modern back end of it, I think everyone who walks through this understands what was here and what is now here. So I think it's a, a good way of looking at the structure and the, and the program. So I appreciate that.
Commissioners on Zoom.
Any, any thoughts?
This is Krista Nielsen. I'll just say, I'm kind of echoing what Mr. Herring just said, but I think, you know, it may not be the ideal outcome, but I think it's come a long way from where it was back in March and that last photo where you see the, the facade of the 1913 library facing the green, I, I think it could be, it could be, you know, a pretty good outcome that I think a lot of people, it, it strikes the middle ground, I think, for a lot of people. So I, I find that it meets what we asked for in conditions eight and nine.
I agree. It substantially achieves what we attempted to get here, and I think it is a substantial improvement. This is Commissioner Cassavant over the initial discussions.
Grab it.
I'd like to just add. Is it an improvement over what we were presented back in April? It probably is. I would agree with all the comments that have been stated thus far. But is it historic preservation? No, it's not. It's, it's a token effort at keeping a fraction or a portion of our legacy building here to satisfy conditions of an approval. Four months ago, five months ago, keeping anything of this building was never on the table. It's never been part of the library's discussion. Ms. Oldham admitted to that. Right? This, this has always been the plan to get rid of the library, of the 1913, 36 library. So there's, there's, to be able to say that there was a, a, a a wholehearted effort at studying how to keep the library with the new design is just not accurate. Like I said, it's, it's very easy to see how the programming of the new library and the demolition of the old relative to the site plan, how it benefits the library in terms of logistics and cost and construction and everything else. And I do believe that's the driving factor here and has been from the very beginning. I think the new, needless to say, the new library as designed, the new portion is a beautiful building. They've done a great job. It's a gorgeous building. I think what just needs to go on record is that, and, and keep saying it, it's a missed opportunity. Had there been consideration for this five years ago, two years ago, three years ago, before Centerbrook got this far with the current design, there could have been an alternative design that incorporated the 1913 into it. You bring up Bryant Park, bring up Cooper Hewitt down in the city, you know, the, the Morgan Library. A historic structure with a modern addition all incorporated and working seamlessly together. There was that opportunity here. I wouldn't compare the town hall renovation to this. Town Hall did repurpose the historic structure and add on to it. That's not what we're doing here. We're relocating a fraction of the 1913 without any known program or any known intent. We're going to probably approve it tonight. I'm not, but the rest of the commission may. And this building will be relocated and most likely be used to store lawn furniture. We don't know.
So I want, I want to ask a question of Ken Turner. Ken, as you know, as Dan mentioned, you worked on the, or wrote the historic district guidelines. So as the author of that, to what extent does the, does this proposal conform to those guidelines?
Well.
The intent of those guidelines as well.
Let me just clarify one thing. I wasn't the only author. There were others that participated in basically an updated version of the village design guidelines. To answer your question, does it meet the intent, the spirit? No, it does not. But, you know, unfortunately, this commission has voted with conditions. And tonight's presentation, I think, has done a, a good job of, of answering those conditions. Am I happy with the outcome? No, I'm not. I agree, there's some missed opportunities. It's very unfortunate, but we have a process that we followed and, and here we are. So I hope I answered your question.
Okay, first, first thing I want to do is, this is clearly among the commissions, then one of the most contentious I've been on this commission since 2007 that we've dealt with. And I think one of the things this commission is very, very good at is trying to address the facts, making assessments, conducting our dialogue and, you know, deliberative matter in a collegial manner. And I think we've largely, except for a few tense spots a few months ago, have largely accomplished that. And, and I want to thank all of you for your time and your diligence and quite frankly, your passion. And, and I think those who may vote yes, may vote no, I think there's passion equally on both sides. Second is you know, the, the original approvals, options A, options B, did not envision in situ. I'll just point that out.
Option B did.
Option, absolutely did.
Option B did.
Okay, I'm not going to argue that right now. The what we asked the architects to do, the way we asked the applicant to do. But the one thing that I saw in this process was we can debate previous history. I'm not going to go into that, but I think at least this time around, what we saw was a very good thoughtful process. I, I will take exception to some of the comments that have been made by the library team and, and by the architects. And to say that, you know, I think there is preservation here. It's clearly beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Some people felt, feel that it's only preservation if it's in situ and nothing's touched. Respectfully, I disagree. I think there's many projects out there where things do get moved around and, you know, you're trying to achieve a certain level of preservation. And I think a certain, a great level of preservation's been achieved. It's not for us to adjudicate the history of the process of the creation of the new library, but I, I do think a heck of a lot of progress has been made from what we saw for the original application. And I have to say, I, I do like the concept of the greater open space. I just, that's personal preference. And again, we can debate that. I also think, look, we have two years. So perhaps, you know, as Mr. Bash has pointed out, and, you know, I, I know there are lines of communication between the library and the New Canaan Preservation Alliance. And by the way, I want to thank the New Canaan Preservation Alliance as well. I've read your letters. I've read your submissions. I said that months ago, and I continue to do that and all of these Commissioners do. So, you know, perhaps there's further progress that can be made there, but what's before us tonight is a specific decision as to whether we enable the library to go ahead with their project. By the way, I'm also encouraged to that. You know, we, we, we typically say we're not responsible for costs, cost to the town. But I am encouraged by the fact that the library intends to fund this, and I hope that, you know, fund this privately and, you know, we can debate that too, but, you know, hopefully that happens. So this is a, frankly, from the day that I saw the original application. Personally, I think this is huge progress. So I'm going to call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Crisp?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
No.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash? No. Okay, motion approval. Thank you again to everybody. Now, we actually have a meeting to conduct. Let's go to our public hearing. Item number two, 2000 lane upon application Neil Howke, Neil Howke Architects authorized agent for William and Lauren Frank owners for a special permit approval of sections 378 to allow maximum building coverage to be increased to 5,562 square feet, which is 1,030. Excuse me, excuse me, everybody. My apologies, but if everybody could not chat until you exit the room. I'd be very appreciative. Thank you. Okay, we're to permit an increase in building coverage of up to 1,030 square feet above allowable total area of deed restricted area will be 2,060 square feet. This translates to under 22.73% of the allowable in the one acre zone at 2000 lane. So Mr. Help?
Yes.
Please present.
Okay, for the record, I am Neil Howke from Neil Howke Architects in Darien. I am representing Bill and Lauren Frank. Mr. Frank is with us this evening. Should you have any questions about the property that I'm unable to answer? So we're applying for a special permit under section 3.7E of the New Canaan zoning regulations. And Lynn, if you could put slide drawing number Z100 up. So well, this is going to be hard for some of you to see, but it basically shows a plan of the existing house. A plan of what we're proposing, the, the additions we're proposing. And then some square footage tallies. And ju- just to get into the specifics, we're asking to increase the total building coverage from an existing coverage of 4,450 square feet to 5,562 square feet. This represents an increase of 1,030 square feet over the maximum allowable building coverage. And that number is 4,532 square feet, which is permitted by subsection 3.5D. This translates to building coverage, total building coverage of 122.73% of the allowable, which falls below the 140% limit described in section 3.7E. In exchange for this increase in the allowable building coverage, we're offering to place a deed restriction on the height of certain portions of the existing and proposed residence. These are shown on both the survey of proposed project prepared by RKW Land Surveying and dated October 28th, 2021, as well as on our drawing number Z101. And they can be summarized as follows. The total footprint of areas of deed restricted height comes to 2,060 square feet, which has to be twice the increase in coverage over the maximum allowable. So the total increase to allowable lot coverage is 1,030 square feet. I also want to point out that a portion of this property lies within the historic district. And as a result, we applied for a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission back on July 8th. And that application was heard on July 22nd and was unanimously approved. So so this this drawing that's up there now looks like it is the existing plot plan. That's how the property currently exists. And then if you could go to the Z100, please. There we go. So that, on the left upper quadrant, you'll see the existing floor plan. We're going to remove a, a small section of the garage to the left, to the very left. And then we're proposing to add a mudroom and garage on the, if you go to the drawing in the upper right quadrant, that shows you the plan that, of what we're proposing. And there, there's a small addition to the to the existing master bedroom suite. And then also a, as I said, mudroom and garage addition, which is in the lower left-hand corner of, of that proposed plan. And if you look in the lower right-hand corner of this drawing, you'll see the hatched in areas of perhaps more clear for you to see, if you scroll up just a bit. Scroll up the other direction so we can see the bottom of that drawing. Yep, keep going up. Little further up, there we go. So that shows you in, in a more clear sense, the two hatched areas are what we're proposing to, to add to the existing structure. And then if you go to the next drawing, Lynn, which is Z101, that clarifies the areas of deed restriction, deed restricted height. And you can see the hatched areas are what we're proposing to deed restrict. Those total, as I said, 2,060 square feet, which when divided by two gives you the total area that we're proposing to add over the allowable maximum building coverage permitted by section 3.5D. I think that in a nutshell describes it. I think this application is sort of the a textbook example of why this regulation was written. It, it limits the, the bulk in terms of height on the property. But trans, you know, translates that into a little bit more building coverage. Questions?
Commissioners?
This is John Crisp. Could you talk about some of the building materials?
Yes. Right, so we would be.
Including roofing materials.
I'm sorry.
Including roofing materials.
Yes, so we're proposing to side the structure. Actually, Lynn, could you? Actually, Lynn, could you put up the um, we have some photographs of the existing structure, which we've included. And that there's existing clavard siding which would be matching the roofing. We're proposing um get my drawings out to make sure I'm uh accurate here. Yeah, so we were proposing a standing seam metal roof on the garage addition. Differentiated a bit from the rest of the house, but the rest of the house would end up getting a red cedar shingle roof. And the siding would be clavard. See if we can show you the existing.
So the the structure is now wood clavard. It's the additions are going to be all wood clavard except and the roof on the proposed garage is going to be a metal roof.
Yes. That's just proposed now.
Oh.
And that was reviewed by Historic District Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Just a permeable space, permeable coverage is the is the driveway um asphalt or is it um gravel? Because I see that you added the parking area, just thinking about runoff and.
Yeah, the we submitted a um Doug Divesta from Divesta Civil Engineering did a very detailed drainage analysis. Doug unfortunately was not able to join us this evening. But um, I I believe we were proposing to do asphalt on the uh, on the
Okay.
I don't have the the total impervious area calculations in front of me, I'm sorry, but they are in the application.
I have them here, thank you. I I just want to make sure I it didn't specify the material, so thanks for clarifying that.
Commissioners on Zoom, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, hi, it's Kent Turner. Um, I I didn't see a floor plan for the second level of the garage. What uh, what what is going on?
Well, it it's just an open play space.
Okay, um what um an open play space? So it's it's, there's nothing planned for the room, no restrooms, no kitchen sink, um.
Nothing, it's it's, you you one goes up, uh, if we go back, well, if you look at the first floor plan that was included, you'll see that one can come from the mudroom into the garage area and then either down a few steps into the garage or up a stair to the space above. And that's just an open bonus room, really, that's all it is. It's not a bedroom.
But as far as filing, uh, what what are you calling the occupancy?
It's a single
You have to, you have to identify what what the room is. What are you saying? It's a playroom?
Yeah, it's a it's a playroom, it's a bonus room.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I apologize for not including that plan. I didn't think it was germane to the application, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done, go ahead, thanks.
Yes, sir. Um, so this space above the garage will be heated? So it's a heated garage and the space above will be heated as well?
Yes.
Uh, you're not envisioning plumbing though for that space?
No.
Maybe an outside garden tap, but that's about it.
The outside garden tap would be on the first floor.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm I'm, thank you, you asked me my question.
Anybody else?
Hi, it's Kent Turner again. Um, just had another question on uh, the square footage. Uh, does the eleven hundred and twelve square feet include this uh, second level garage? The the playroom?
It's um, I'm not sure where you're getting that number eleven hundred and twelve.
Well, I got it off of uh, your drawing that indicates it's it's shaded and it indicates uh, you know, the garage area being eleven hundred and twelve square feet.
Oh, 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 I see.
And I'm asking, is the second floor included in that square footage?
No, that's a footprint. It's purely a
So
This regulation is is dealt, is dealing with the lot coverage and not total square footage.
Okay.
Building coverage, yes, I'm sorry.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Help.
Thank you.
Then can uh, well, anyone in the room like to address this application? Okay, Lynn, please check Zoom, Lynn.
Does anyone who's um on Zoom want to address this application? And if you do, please raise your hand. It looked like there is anyone who wants to speak.
Okay, great, thank you, Lynn. Okay, this application's closed. Item number three, five oh seven Smith Ridge Road upon application Alan Broadband, Broadband, Broadband Design Studio authorized agent for Cleveland Coleman owners for special permit approval of sections three, four, C two, six, four, G to allow illuminated tennis court improvements totaling ten thousand square feet or more of disturbance, the four acre zone at five oh seven Smith Ridge Road, sir.
Good evening, Alan Broadband, Broadband Design Studio here representing the new owners of this property, young family, Cleveland and Desiree Coleman and their children. Here, as you just mentioned, under two conditions, one is to seek approval to add illumination to an existing tennis court. And the second is by nature of the quantity of land disturbance um, for otherwise um fairly normal tasks like improving a driveway and doing other things with um some grading on the site. So that is section six point four G. So I'll start first with just some discussion around the tennis court. The tennis court is existing on the site, it was installed in nineteen fifty-one. It was installed in what would now be considered front yard setback a hundred and fifty feet from the road. This tennis court is a little bit closer than that, it's about eighty feet to the road, uh, sixty feet to the property line. And it's a standard sized tennis court, and it currently has black chain link fencing around it. Um, the homeowner in the last two months has invested quite a deal, quite a bit of of um time and effort into increasing the amount of buffer and screening and privacy boundary between Smith Ridge Road and the tennis court, as well as between adjoining property at six twenty-one Canoe Hill and the tennis court. And would like to seek your approval for illuminating the tennis court for recreational use for their family to use the tennis court um after the sun has set. We have provided in our application a lot of information in terms of the screening that's been done and views, there are pictures in the application which Lynn's bringing up of the views, critical views, looking um from Smith Ridge up towards the area and also an aerial view looking down at the at the site. Um, a solid board fence in the front yard in compliance with zoning regulations of four foot height has recently been added to add one more layer of protection and screening, both for those traveling on Smith Ridge as well as for the owner and his children. Um, we've also provided a photometric diagram from the tennis court lighting company. So they've shown full compliance, um, not taking into consideration any of the screening, which would only make things much better, that there's no light pollution greater than point zero one foot candles at the property line. So the light is cut off. The fit, the light would be accomplished with a series of four fixtures on each side of the court. And the lights would naturally be pointed down towards the court and will be mounted on poles that are in compliance with the zoning regulations. Um, we have spoken with a number of neighbors about this. I think the reaction was you have a tennis court because it's so far from their homes. We submitted a diagram showing the distance, it's a five hundred foot distance from the tennis court to the neighboring residences, um, and then across Smith Ridge is the Country Club of New Canaan. Would you like to discuss that piece of this or have me finish the rest of it and then discuss both?
Why don't you uh, why don't you address all the dirt moving and then we'll we'll address?
Sure. So um, impetus for the project to uh, increase usability and safety of the driveway. So many of you have driven on Smith Ridge, you know how traffic travels on Smith Ridge, this is no exception. And this particular location is um immediately after the intersection with Country Club. And the driveway is quite narrow and provides no street parking for the owner. And so our application is to modestly increase the width of the driveway and then to reconfigure the existing parking court at the top of the driveway. And also to reconfigure and move the leg that goes from the main entryway to the garage and put that into a more feasible location for the owner and their use. Additional to that, we're proposing grading between the parking area, the tennis court and the swimming pool. A very, very large beach tree succumbed to root uh fungus this past year. And at the advice of Hutchinson Tree, it was removed. And so we'd now, we now have the opportunity to make a more useful flat recreation lawn between the driveway and the parking corp. The grading itself is actually quite modest, we're talking about cut of one foot and fill of one foot, but by its nature being a very large area, it qualifies us for seeking your approval under six point four G, we're disturbing more than ten thousand square feet. Naturally, erosion and sedimentation control devices will be implemented as you would expect. And the site construction will be done in a way that has no impact on any neighbor, on traffic, or provides any adverse impact to the environment. Hopefully that gives you a good broad explanation of the project.
Thank you. Uh, questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, James Bash, um, I'm just looking over some of the regulations that have to do with outdoor lighting. And I don't want to be too specific, but I just wanted uh, to get a little bit of uh detail on the on and off uh, timing of the lighting, um, you know, thinking about the neighbors and how they would be impacted unless the illumination um goes off by a certain um time. Or do you expect regardless of when the illumination goes off, no neighbor is going to be impacted by this at all?
Good question. I'll address the first is that this will not be on an auto on timer. This would be switched on by the owner when they, when they want to go use the court for recreational purposes. Um, the second part of the answer is it's not visible from the neighbor, so even if it were on, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be visible.
Okay, if it was, uh, so again, sorry, I know, recognize this sounds overly pedantic, but uh, if uh, in section six point one one, um, just reading of uh, our our zoning regs, it says all non-essential lighting, I assume this is a part of its display aesthetic parking and sign lighting shall be configured for photocell on time clock off oper- op- operation. Unless someone wants to tell me differently, um, I I kind of assumed that that was a fixed on-off uh, regulation that we had. And if that is the case, would you be fine uh incorporating that on and off in this uh, before we, before we make a vote?
Sure, but I want to make sure I understand uh, your your point. Are you suggesting that the lights be controlled by an automatic timer, which would have them on more frequently than if the owner turns them on on occasion to use the court?
I'm sorry, sir, just spare with me for a second, just wanna yeah, so you take a long
Keep going.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Just making sure I understand. So so the court, the owner's intention with the court is to turn the lights on to use the court for half an hour with their children and then turn the lights off, which would mean less frequently having the lights on than having it on some sort of photocell. That was my my question.
Okay. Um, in terms of the illumination though, impact on the neighbors, do you foresee, sir, any type of illumination impact on neighbors?
We don't, and we've spoken with the neighbors.
Okay, I did see that you guys had a mailing that went out and I think it was December second. Happy you did that. Has have any responded uh negatively to it?
Then have, you know.
Okay. And then the last, again, I apologize for for being overly overly raw here. Um, in terms of fixtures, and again, I'm looking at our zoning regs on section six point one one, page one sixty-three. It goes over the type of fixtures which might produce glare or light trespass and those which might not. So I think there are certain recommended fixtures just to ensure that this is not going to be an issue. And would you, would you be okay with conforming with some of the suggested fixtures that wouldn't produce extra glare or light trespass?
Correct, so the fixture that we have selected produced by LSI Lighting Solutions is a full cutoff dark sky fixture. So the light is only producing downward, uh, and there is no light pollution. We've also worked directly with their specifier to ensure that the pattern of light distribution, which is controllable, it's amazing what these custom LED patterns can produce, is very tight to the court itself. Um, this is very different from the metal highlights of fifty years ago. This is very focused on just the court.
All right, thank you.
Um, this is Dan Radman. Um, the existing tennis court, what is the elevation of that?
The existing tennis court is elevation around seventy-five, seventy-five, seventy-six is the existing elevation.
And what is the elevation of the road adjacent to that at Smith Ridge?
The road, the road is in a range of sixty to seventy, depending on where you'd measure.
And how, right, and how tall are the lights, light poles?
Light poles would be mounted on eighteen foot tall poles.
So we're talking uh, from the viewpoint of a person driving northbound on Smith Ridge. You're talking about a light pole that's going to be about thirty-five feet in the air approximately?
If they could be seen, yes.
If they could be seen?
Right.
The um, they're not going to be seen because of the existing trees?
So there are existing trees, but we've also introduced a hundred and twenty new trees of sixteen foot height. So it's a very different situation in the past two months than it may have been previously.
That a hundred twenty new trees that have been, because I only see four on the site plan that looks like they've been introduced in that area.
Those four that you see that actually have not yet been planted, those are ornamental trees. What have been planted are the ones that are ghosted in gray on the site plan. Um, and that's actually just a graphic depiction of that. If you look at the picture submitted in the packet, you'll see there's a view of the trees there, it is right there. That's the view of the trees from standing just to the west of the tennis court. So you'd be looking southwest, the street would be down to your right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And we're confident that these evergreens, I guess they're noted as uh, twelve foot evergreens?
Mm-hmm, twelve to sixteen foot of a sort of
Sixteen foot, so all of those will provide just a uh, in in terms of a shielding of the view angle from the road as someone's driving north, you just don't want them to be blinded by these large tennis court lights.
Completely agree, and that was his intention in in uh, working with us to to put those trees in first, so that we have that protection and that boundary.
Got it.
For both just privacy on the court itself, as well as for this idea of eliminating the court.
Okay, thank you.
This is John Crisp. What type of trees are you planning to install?
The trees that have been installed is a mix of um, American holly, hemlock, Norway spruce and dark American arborvitae. And then there are some other small ornamental trees that will be added, which will probably be um, winter king hawthorn is what we have in mind. Okay. Which is a native Catechus spiritus.
All native trees.
Mm-hmm, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Zoom land, commissioners, any questions? Nope. Okay, would anybody, thank you, sir, would anybody from the public like to address this application? Lynn, let's check Zoom, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to address this application? If so, please raise your hand.
Okay, great, thank you, Lynn. Uh, this hearing's closed. Um, item number four, ninety-five Charter Oak upon application John and Ann Hutchins owners for special permit approval of sections eight, one, eight, two, three, four, C six to allow construction of a twenty-five foot by twenty foot accessory structure, one and a half story to be used as a woodworking shop in the two acre zone at ninety-five Charter Oak Drive, sir.
Yes.
What would you like me to, I'm a complete novice in this. Well, we, yeah, it's it it it's easy, just tell us um, what you want to do and why it's um, describe what you want to do.
Right, so
Tell us why.
What I'm
Sir, and and then tell us why it, we should approve it. We live at a Charter Oak Drive and Charter Oak Lane or cul-de-sac. Uh, we happen to live at the at the Y intersection of the cul-de-sac, so by town regulations, we have a whole lot of front yard. Uh, our real front yard, and and there's a, I've got a photo in here that would show it uh, fronts onto Charter Oak Lane. The place where we would like to build this accessory structure is about fifty feet or so from Charter Oak Drive. And because we live on Charter Oak Drive as well as Charter Oak Lane, we run afoul of the hundred and fifty foot um, front yard setback on Charter Oak Drive. As a practical matter, if you were to, I don't know whether anybody's been out to see the property, but it's it's side lot for us, it's woods actually with uh, you know, um, all sorts of shrubs and trees. It's an area now where we throw a lot of our leaves and sticks. So it's, it's, it's side yard, but defined by the regulation is front yard. What we would like to do, and I'm a amateur woodworker, um, my garage is an increasingly. Uh, insufficient space to make furniture in. It's cold in the winter and. An air conditioner and hot as hell in the summer. Um, this would be essentially the, a little bit smaller than a two car garage. It would be uh, located about, as I said, fifty feet uh, from Charter Oak. Drive, it would be partially obscured from the road. By very, very large old persythia bushes, other shrubbery and a bunch of trees. So it wouldn't be completely, you would be, you would see it from the road, but it would be certainly partially obscured from the road. It will not have plumbing, it will not have exterior lighting, it will be uh, a, a story and a half. And it's um. Yeah, I mean, I, and, and I, you know, in answering the, the questions that um, about. It's appropriateness relative to um, neighboring structures, we would probably, we would, uh, it would be clavoured. Painted gray in all probability like our houses. It would have an asphalt single roof. It would have uh, windows around at least three of the sides. They would be up fairly high to be able to, you know, make more workable space inside the, the workshop. There are some photos in here that, yeah, there, there's one. See, that, so if you could flip, can that be flipped sideways?
I don't think that we have that.
Alright, so that is, I apologize for that. That is a shot I took of, of essentially where it would. Move um, a, 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 a large tulip tree. A large ash tree and a couple of other small trees that sit really right on the corner off of where our garage is. This, this will be quite close to where uh, where our garage is. As, as you drive into our driveway, it'll just essentially be up on a small rise um, to your right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions for the applicant?
Yes, I, this is Commissioner Cassavan. Will there be any need or requirement for special air handling or ventilation?
No, well, it's a great question. Uh, dust is a big problem in um, in, in a, in a woodworking shop. But you collect it all internal to, to the, you, you have a system internally that collects dust. But no, there will be no, there'll be no external venting of, of any, of any sort.
Okay, and, and how will you heat the structure?
Uh, we will probably use an uh, natural gas and inverter type of structure. I, I, I don't know a whole lot about this, but it will need to be uh, both heated and, and air conditioned. So we'll probably do it with propane.
And, and a third related to the ventilation question, is there any, if you say you're making furniture, right? Is, is there any um, use of, for example, um, surface materials, veneers? Stains, varnishes that would require ventilation for your own safety and perhaps for your neighbor's safety?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I, I don't make large pieces of furniture. There's small pieces of furniture and I tend to finish them with finishes that have very low VOC content. So um, to the extent that I was spraying something, uh, I would, you know, that had a, a higher VOC content. I would wear a mask and it would, I, I'm guessing that it would never be in the, in a volume of output. That would impact anybody other than me as the person spraying it.
This is, would you, would you have a spray booth in there?
I might have a small portable spray booth, but.
That would be self, self-contained filtration?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Dick Ward, have you had any reaction from neighbors?
No, no, we have not. Well, supportive actually. But nobody, nobody's put up their hand and said, you know, what the heck are you doing? I don't, I don't like it. I don't agree.
Just a question on, on the setback. So you're, you're proposing fifty feet back from the road, um. I guess like the question I feel obligated to ask is what's the hardship in, in pushing it back seventy-five feet from the road?
Uh, what that does is it, it interferes with uh, our garage and our side yard. It was, it's close, you know, so, so our, we bought our house in nineteen ninety-seven. A hundred and fifty feet from Charter Oak Drive actually goes into our garage.
Oh, I, I, I get that, but if you, if you went seventy feet back, for example, would it, uh, it looks like it impacts your shed there?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. It, the, the farther back you push it, the more it impacts access to the backyard around the side of the house. And access to the shed.
Right, so this visual here, so if you were to slot it back, I don't know, call it ten feet, then you'd impact your shed. You'd have to move your shed. Is that?
Yeah.
That's the hardship?
Yeah.
Okay, and the second question, just on the, Lynn, if you can scroll down and just get a visual on the structure. Kind of the. I call it the rendering.
Right.
What pitch is that roof and, and why'd you select that pitch of roof out of curiosity?
I have no idea.
No idea? So you'd be open to a steeper pitch?
Initially, well, so when I first started to talk to our builder architect. We went by the regulations, which uh, as I understand it, for an accessory structure this size, allow um. Was it, is it two stories?
One and a half.
And, and so I actually uh, lowered it um, to make it less visible. So i- in terms of the, the, yes, I mean, we could probably pitch the roof, you know, higher than that.
So is it, is it a two building, just I'm, I'm trying to read the windows here. So basically you shuffled the windows up to get more usable wall space internally.
Internal, yes.
But that's a one-story building.
Yes, this is a one-story building.
So this is James Bash. So i- is this essentially the, an opportunity to uh, move the operations of something you'd have to do at an outside facility? To some place that's much more convenient for you?
Yeah, I mean, I occasionally go over to Woodworkers Club in Nor, on Route One in Norwalk, but that's, that's, that's a, that's not a particularly good. Solution to. And I, and in my garage, I, I don't know how familiar you are with, with, with power equipment, but I need a jointer. Uh, I need a, a table saw without, with a, you know, nice outfeed. And I can't do that in the garage. And so I, I can't take a big piece of plywood up and do what I want to it, you know, on a, on a table saw. And, and there's actually the climate control is, is absolutely, I mean, working with half gloves in the winter when it's fifty-five degrees in the garage. And eighty-five and a hundred percent humidity in the summer is.
And it, it is, this is just going to be you uh, operating within the, Mr. Hutchins, no commercial aspect of this stuff?
I don't sell anything. I'm just a, I'm a totally a hobbyist and, and I just, I want a space that I can, it's all my own. I'm not getting dust and stuff that my dear wife is uh, complains to me about, so.
No comment, understood, thank you.
Quiz is a, the um, exterior of the building is clavoured, wood clavoured?
Yeah, that would be my intent, yeah. Doing whatever is, is as consistent with. With our house and, and shed and it's all gray, clavoured, gray painted, wet trim.
I- if you are um, powering the uh, HVAC with propane, I presume you'd have to put a propane tank outside? That's the above ground or below ground?
We, yeah, I, you know, to be honest with you, I don't have, I don't have a good answer for that.
I, I mentioned this because, you know, propane tanks sitting on the side of a building, fifty with the side of a road is.
Right, we have.
Prettiest thing.
Right, we have a, we have a large uh, propane tank that we use for our generator and our pool. So we, we might, maybe there's a way to, and, and it's already underground, so there's probably a way to, to, to use that.
I should also notice, I'm a fellow, fellow woodworker. I made clock cases, it's in furniture in mine, and uh, yeah. Didn't have quite of the equipment you. But uh, yeah, uh, th- this is a standard garage door size?
Yeah, yeah.
So that in, at some point, depending on who owns the building, forty years from now, they may want to use this as a garage or could use it as a garage?
Yeah, I suppose. Uh, I, I put it in just for ease of, of, of getting larger things in and out.
I take the point.
Building, but. I'm not intending that there be a driveway in from Charter Oak Drive. That actually, that, that, that garage door does fit, would face Charter Oak Drive. Um, so that's actually a good question, but we, we don't, I don't see need to put any kind of driveway or parking area. Or, or anything in there.
My one concern would be the, you know, an exterior, not particularly attractive propane tank. I'm wondering, why not just electrify everything and go green?
Might do. I mean, I, I, we just haven't, honestly, I mean, I, I, yeah, I don't, I, I, I would, I would agree with your comment.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, sir. Um, Dan Radman here. Um, to your point on which, just which uh, face of the building faces Charter Oak Drive? Are you saying the facade with the garage door faces Charter Oak?
The, the facade, the facade with the garage door faces Charter Oak.
So how are you going to do that? Because then you're going to have to introduce some sort of a driveway or. Is it going to come off of the existing driver?
So if you were to, if, if anybody's been out to the property, you'll see that um. That has been used as a kind of an ersatz pathway in the past. So I, I, I think it's not um. It's not a driveway and, and I don't believe it's, it's, it's particularly compacted, but um. I'm guessing vehicles have gone into that area previously from Charter Oak Drive.
Hmm. Okay, um. I just think it's going to be problematic if you're thinking of using that as an access way to load the garage. Would it behoove you to put the garage door on the opposite side facing the house where you have a closer proximity to? The existing driveway?
So um, an option would be just to eliminate the garage door and put just large, you know, barn type. A double type barn door in the front that we could get stuff in and out of the, you know, materials and machines and whatnot. In and out of the, uh, in and out of the um, building.
It, Lynn, if there was, if he was to use this pathway from Charter Oak Drive and introduce a new driveway. That would require approval of a new curb cut condition for a driveway, correct? DPW. Yeah, I would, um, if you plan to keep the garage door there, then you should, we should require that um, approval from DPW. To make sure they're on board with that, or if there's flexibility on your side on which side to put the garage door.
So if, if the, the space. Does it need to be that formalized in the sense that um. Number one, the garage door i- is not going to be open and closed a lot and not a lot of stuff is, is going to go in and out of it. So it could be, we just remove it. Um, to the extent that, you know, delivery truck is, is delivering a heavy piece of equipment. And, and they want to dolly it a short piece of distance as opposed to a longer distance. I guess they could just park the truck on Charter Oak Drive and dolly it in over, you know, leaves and dirt. So the, the reason I didn't. Sue the, the curb cut and in essence, the second driveway into there is just that. For my use, I just don't see a, a need to do that. I'm, I'm not going to be using it that frequently to. You know, to back a truck up, to, you know, pick something up or take it out and, and go over that little dirt strip between Charter Oak Drive. And, and you know, where that garage door was showing.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, anyone like to address this application? Uh, Lynn, check Zoom, please.
Does anyone on Zoom want to address this application? I think that's a no.
Okay, great. This application's closed. Thank you. Okay, item number six, thirteen South Avenue. Upon application, South Avenue property owner is on Mustafa contract. Then D for site plan approval for retail cigars, tobacco shop, retail A zone at thirteen South Avenue. So I talked to uh, a sir this year, hopefully you got a phone call. This hearing's been closed. So we will be taking no more public input, but it'd be worthwhile for you to listen, of course. So commissioners, I spoke to Pete Gelderman, um, pretty much as I expected. Which is that this isn't allowed use in the zone. So for that reason, we could not deny this application. What we would have to do is we would have to pass a text amendment for the zone. To prohibit, you know, tobacco use or whatever the right product spectrum is. So, you know, we're pretty limited here. Um, now what we can do is, and I think I mentioned this last month, is. You know, if there's any other issues with the site plan, we could always turn down the site plan for other issues, but it can't be used. The other thing we can also do is if we do have concerns about um, display of, let's say. Tobacco or tobacco-related products we're not wild about, we can always say that as part of our approval. How much weight does it carry? Not a heck of a lot, but perhaps the applicant, you know, would in good faith, take our input. So that's pretty much it there. Um, so any, any, any questions on my feedback or? I think it's sort of clear. So I'll, I'll entertain a motion for approval or denial.
I'll motion to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Radman?
Um, as stated, um, the use is allowable in this zone. Um, I don't think we can be um, prejudicial on this uh, based on the fact that. Other establishments directly across the street, around the corner and down the block all sell similar products. I think it would be uh, advantageous for the applicant to agree to. Which they have to by law as well, um, monitor and control, you know, um. Age of people purchasing uh, the material. That's, that's just common practice. Um, to Mr. Cor, I don't, Claire's not on tonight, but that was her concern. But um, I think it's an appropriate use and I look forward to buying this, you are?
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, well, just wanted, are there any opportunity for discussion on just?
I take the second and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, gotcha.
So I hear a little second, okay, or Mr. Chris, okay, now.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to clarify on the um. The advertising constraints on the, the they thing, I think if, I, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Tiscornia, but I think. The, the cigars were of less concern as compared to the cigarettes, given that uh. Given that the cigarettes are, are, you know, rampant at the, at the middle school and high school. And so um, I, I did connect with the, the police department on this in terms of. The operations that they pursue to um, enforce right compliance and, and the town. Just for discussion amongst the committee, um, the town does run um. Instincting operations with the Connecticut Department of Public Health on a regular basis. The last one was in twenty nineteen. Actually before the tobacco regulation was moved from eighteen to twenty-one. The purchasing price of tobacco is now uh, twenty-one versus eighteen, that was signed to law in uh, twenty nineteen. So um. And, and you know, you compare it to Norwalk, Norwalk had, I think we had one violation of the past. Three stings and that happened to be over on, on Elm Street in the um, the old AMP liquor store at the time. Not sure if it was alcohol or tobacco related, to be honest with you, wasn't clarified. But in, in Norwalk, um, there were five violations last year of underage sales to, to kids. So, you know, I, I have a lot of faith in our police department and uh, you know, the enforcement of that. So I guess I would. I'd like to see, I guess this goes under what we'd like to see versus what we can enforce. I'd like to see, you know. You know, more focus on the cigar versus the vaping aspect of it, and I I understand a business has to be run like a business, but. Uh, from a a contributing member of of the town um perspective, you know, I understand vapes are are fine for adults. Et cetera, but I'd like to avoid the idea of endorsing high advertising of vapes to to children, so.
To to that point, um, just to make it clear for the applicant that you'll most likely be putting some signage up on the building to. For your store, uh, that would require a separate signage permit. Um, and then alongside that, there are strict regulations in town about what kind of signage you can or can't put in the windows or on the windows. Behind the windows, et cetera. So just a a note to make sure you comply with that. Okay.
Yeah, like a neon jewel sign would be a bad choice.
Neon signs are not allowed.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry, we.
Okay.
We have to follow the rules. We can't, we can't take any input from you, even though we're talking to you, we can't. Sorry. Apologies. Yeah. Uh, yeah, he he's been seated for the entire evening for Ms. Tiscornia.
Um, yeah, so th- those are my my comments just on that, the emphasis on the and the regulations.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Okay, carries. Um. I look forward to seeing your, what kind of cigars you have as well. Not that I smoke cigars, but. But I do, um, once in a while. Okay, so let's make some additional decisions. Um, item. Item number uh two twenty oh, no claim. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I I motion to approve.
Reasons for approval, Mr. Adman?
While I do realize that it's an increase in um building coverage on the lot, the lot is a in in a one acre zone. It's a one point six acre lot, so there is um available real estate there, which would help to. Um. Uh, soften the impact of the additional square footage and to Mr. To the architect, Mr. Hawks' uh point. Um, there's the the route they chose for the additional living. Um, space, which was an increase in coverage, I believe is a much better solution than going up in height in other portions of the building. And increasing the 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 loom of the building. Um, it's, it's very uh reflective of the rambling farmhouse. That is typical in New England, and I think it's a very handsome addition to the building.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do I have a second? Uh, okay, I got Kent Turner. Uh, further discussion of the motion, anybody? Okay, one thing I'll say is they also have the approval of the historic commission, so another important um review.
Um. Should the motion include the conditions required by the regulations?
Does not have to because they're, they're getting the permit under the regulation, so by definition. Um, anybody else?
And you know, from a materials perspective, you mentioned the standing seam and and that piece of it, does that, is that inclusive in the approval?
That's up to Mr. Radman who's making the motion.
Um, I would, I would um approve the use of that material, um. Given the fact that um the his, the historic district commission has also approved the use of the material. Which, if they've already given their blessing, then I would assume yes.
But do you see a need for a condition on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'll call the question. Um, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, item number three, five oh one, five oh seven, Smith Ridge Road. Do I have a motion for approval or or denial?
This is Commissioner Cassavant. I motion for approval. Uh, my reasons for that is that this is a well thought out, appropriate addition. Uh, the lights are an upgrade, uh, the already committed to trees. Strike me as a great example of using a property effectively. The lack of neighbor commentary is positive. And I think on balance, um, it will improve um the general use of the residents.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Cassavant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Ward seconds.
And I'll just add that the uh widening the driveway is clearly a a safety uh improvement. Uh, for access and uh entrance to the highway. And the. Disturbance of the land is is minor, is uh, as he pointed out, it's. You know, matter of inches down or up, so.
I would also note that right across the street is the new poolhouse of the uh country club, which is a far more visible. Structure than this, which frankly, I never even knew existed. And I'm up and down that road all the time, as I think many of us are, so I think the impact is going to be uh pretty minor.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, making use of a tennis court, which anybody commuting from New York City would know how short the summer play season is getting home. In the evening, it's, that's definitely.
Okay, super. Anybody else? Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Okay, super. Um. Ninety-five Charter Oak, do I have motion for approval or denial?
John Chris, I move we approve with the proviso. Uh, that the HVAC be powered by electricity as opposed to a. On site, separate uh heating element, which had been suggested. Which I would see is very easy to do. Um, uh, by just running a line underground from the, from the main dwelling.
The heat pump model, a heat pump like cold and hot, all electric, is that what you're?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They exist and I think they work quite well and uh would mean not using a natural gas or a gas product, but a electric product. That um could be potentially green power, at least will partly be because by the state you require. Green power, so uh there would be one one proviso, and this was brought up uh to the applicant who did not seem to object at all. To using electricity for power.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it. It's Commissioner Cassavant.
Okay, further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, it's Kent Turner. Um, I, you know, totally agree with the uh green aspect. Uh, you know, environmentally um more appropriate energies source. Um, I I would like some advice or uh hear some other opinions about. Uh, do we have the right to dictate what kind of power? Um, this residence and this addition, the shop will have. Um, does anybody want to discuss this?
It's, um, well, I have two thoughts. I mean, I also had a question. Didn't he say he also had a pool with propane? He did. Um, I mean, I have a propane tank that's driving stoves in my pool and.
He has a generator too.
Yep.
Well, well, pro- propane is for heating. I mean, you you, I don't think you're going to use propane to.
Okay, okay.
So, um, you know, I think he's gonna have a split system. He's gonna probably have electricity and propane.
He's gonna need a lot of.
I could use a mini split to do both. I mean, I heat my house with any splits.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, going to Kent's other question. It's aggressive. You know. Type of a, my opinion. I'm not saying you can't do it.
Um, I I take, my my concern is that um, one, I'd I'd like to try to uh avoid the use of of gases if I can. Uh, also, there's the issue of uh potentially, you know, where to put the propane tank. Now, if they could um hive it off of the current installation. I'd be okay with that, but you know, especially something that's rel- relatively close to a road and potentially visible from the road. And have one of those tanks sitting outside, so it'd be either buried and separate or uh or electric. Or using current propane that uh simply would tap a line in. I'm I'm okay with any of those. Uh, my preference would be electric, but I, you know, I I personally can't stand those big lozenges. Sitting outside in front of the house, it's just.
A recommendation rather than the conditions.
I'm, well, I I mean, just looking at the special permit criteria, it's pretty pretty clear to me. I mean, the special permit crit- criteria that's included in the application. Says appropriate improvements that. You know, have designed elements and then um suitable, you know, transportation commissions, which isn't really applicable here. But environmental protection and conservation, appropriate consideration shall be given to the protection, preservation enhancements, blah 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 of scenic resources. And permanently preserve nature, straight. So I guess I would say that the give and take of a, of a special permit. Is they're asking for special approval to 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 go outside the lines and we can therefore put some impositions on it. That's my understanding of the way.
Just for the record, I I disagree with that. Um. Yeah, we can put conditions. Um, however, um, I don't think um it was ever. Understood or uh anybody thought that we could dictate a type of power.
Why is that, why is that different than?
It's a, it is a, it is a energy source. Propane is used by probably, you know, ninety percent of New Canaan. Um, how do we suddenly say, okay, there's, you can no longer as part of a special permit? Have propane. I I I'm sorry. I don't, I don't see where we have that kind of power.
I'm not saying it's.
Much as, as much as I would like.
Consistently ahead of, you know, for every application, I'm just saying that. When you remove a tree, when you, when you take an extra two feet, we ask for a concession, whether it be. You know, keeping consistent with. Materials, whether it be consistent with, you know, indigenous plants. So I I think the the environmental protection is consistent with less, you know, disturbance, less energy use. We we were saying that we like solar on the the town buildings.
I know, but you're getting into a pretty slippery slope when you're going to talk about which is more environmentally friendly, right? Uh, you can have arguments of someone supporting solar panels and then someone against solar panels because of the pollutants that are created. In the fabrication of solar panels, right? They're not exactly the most green footprint. Um, when you talk about propane, it's a clean burning gas. Is oil better? No. Um, so. It 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 gets into a slippery slope of an argument for and against for every type of energy source that you could suggest.
Well, don't get me wrong, it would be nice to have a standards in the, in the town. Like, it'd be great if we could actually point to what we thought was good and bad, but we don't have that, do we? So.
Well, the the compromise I suggested was that it either be all electric. Or uh they bury a tank, a separate tank, so it's not visible, so it's something about visible pollution. Uh, and or three, uh, they uh tap into the current propane installation, use that. So, you know, he can pick one of the three, door number one, door number two, door number three.
Yeah, I think.
This also avoids the unsightliness of the tank sitting outside that is within a setback area.
I think, I think Commissioner Chris's multi-tiered recommendation not only represents the right solution. It represents P and Z being responsive to, I believe the gentleman said that he's owned his house since nineteen ninety seven. Being responsive to an applicant's well-designed application with things that are both good for the. Environment, but also responsive to the needs of a homeowner and taxpayer.
Okay, so.
Agreed.
Uh, so John, Mr. Chris, you're sticking with the condition?
Condition would be that we approve uh as um proposed by the applicant with the proviso that uh. Uh, power for the dwelling either be uh. Buried electrical, all electrical, um, well, it's gonna be some electrical anyway, but very electrical, uh. But uh either a separate propane tank that will be buried. Or uh there will be tapping into the current propane tank that's already on site to power it. Uh, the choice being up to the homeowner, he just has to pick one. Anyone of this is approved, it's sort of dealer's choice. That's my proposal, sir. If I may, I'd like to also add another condition, um, that if the applicant starts to use. Um, what I'm worried about is placing that garage door facing the road with no proper driveway. And if he's starting to use that for a loading zone or deliveries or whatever the case may be. Uh, he's going to turn it into a driveway, which would then require DPW approval. So if if that happens, he should go to DPW for that review.
Okay.
Um, the other comment I would make is not necessarily a condition, but just a recommendation. I think Mr. Herring's um observation on the roof pitch is is a good one. It's a very shallow roof pitch on this shed. Um, doesn't seem to represent the rest of the um design of the existing house. And applicants should consider trying to. Raise the roof pitch to emulate the house. I think it would make for a more handsome structure.
Okay, Mr. Chris, uh, that's a recommendation, but uh the the condition uh Mr. Adman suggests is unacceptable to his movement.
I'm fine with Mr. Turner.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Just a point for the first condition with the energy sources.
Yes.
The this structure happened, the the post structure happens to be located a certain distance from the system. So there may be process-wise problems if you give them all the choices. And let's say worst case scenario, none of them work, they have to come back to you guys for a modification of that condition. Or maybe a more generalized, and there are, just there are separation requirements from septic that is right nearby parts of the septic system. So they may or may not, I don't know, you may or may not be able to do any of them or all of them. But it may trigger the gentleman to come back to you guys.
Well, I would suggest that he's gonna need power for this. And he's gonna have to have a like, go in there one way or another. Uh, that 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 ship is sailed sailed or about to sail, so. Uh, if he's got a problem bearing a line somewhere, um, he's got a problem. Uh, so I, you know, those you can curlicue around. I don't see that as an issue, and you could bury a tank, in a lot of places you can bury it, so I I I I see this as easily fixed myself. Um, and if there's a problem, I'm sure it'll come back and we'll treat it in a sympathetic and wise manner.
I think to Lynn's point, I don't think she's worried about the electric. I think it's um proximity of of a underground propane tank. Relative to septic fields and also relative to well, certain offset distances on that. Could be, um, in which case you go electric.
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Redmond, just on the, on the the garage door, what, it it didn't seem the applicant was married to the location of the door. Um, so would you be more comfortable if the door was on the inside side of the property facing?
Yeah, I would. He didn't seem to. He he was more willing to get rid of the door than relocate it.
Yeah.
Which. It's entirely up to him, you know.
Yeah, so I I think, I mean, it seems like it would be much, just looking at this site plan. You know, if the door were on the inside side of the property, it. Even if the driveway were to extend that direction, I'd be much less worried about it.
Agreed.
Okay, this application discussion has been more extensive than I would have.
For a shed.
I'm gonna call the question. Um. Well, the one comment I'll make is, is I I. I don't think this is the case with this one, but there are special permits where we we do have to, we can. Go too far afield. Um, you know, one of the examples which we've talked about is is the movement of dirt, for example, you know, the ten thousand. You know, and then we start laying on different conditions, and so we have to be careful. I I don't think this necessarily gets into that realm. But anyway, um, so John Goodwin, I vote yes. John Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Ken Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um. Planning subcommittee update, uh. planning subcommittee update, uh, Mrs. Nielsen, um, anything for us for tonight?
We do not have anything this evening.
Okay.
Uh, may I ask a question? Uh, and I don't know whether it belongs in the subcommittee or not. Will we be considering as a group, the accessory, um, the accessory law which requires or allows communities to opt in or opt out to the ADU concept? Or have we considered that at all and will that belong in Mrs. Nielsen's subcommittee?
Lynn, do you have, um, or, or Krista, you too? I mean, do either of you have thoughts on that?
Um, we can talk about this. I was hoping to bring it into January or is that a subcommittee?
Okay.
I, I could not hear what Lynn said.
Lynn, you're, you're, that mic is.
Forgot to use the microphone, sorry about that. So, um, initially I was planning to talk about that at the January P and Z meeting and, um, and/or having a subcommittee meeting. And I was hoping to be able to talk to Krista in advance of that schedule if that worked. So, um, I, I haven't had that conversation yet.
But are, are the answer is yes, um, we haven't decided the forum just yet.
I would highly commend to our committee last week's Sunday, New York Times Real Estate section that had an excellent article about ADUs.
Good to hear. Linda, for some reason you're able to share that with the commission. That'd be great. Um, yeah, and why don't you guys talk about that? You know, I, I think the plant, the, the subcommittee, just given the weight of applications on our regular meetings, the subcommittee is, is really had, has to continue to be, and it has been, has to continue to be the real planning vehicle for the commission. Um, item number nine, administrative actions or other matters that may properly come before the commission, 2022 meeting schedule. One thing I'll, I'll note there is for the March 22nd meeting, uh, the budget process, I don't know whether it's about Board of Finance or Town Council or everybody, but they have this room that night. Um, what I asked, um, Tucker has reserved the boardroom for us. Um, so just FYI and as, and of course it will be hybrid. Um, Lynn, do we need to vote on the schedule?
It would be appreciated because I think it was.
Okay, is everybody, did everybody get a chance to review the schedules? Everybody comfortable? I went through my calendar, there. Where it's, I made sure it's not on Halloween this year as it was a few years ago.
And Lynn, is that a typo I caught on Tuesday, December 15th, 2021 for the closing date? It's when they're here.
Is that the wrong?
That's today, right?
All day.
That's for the, is that for the, is that for the January?
Yeah, yeah, but the, the closing date.
It's either Tuesday, the 14th or Wednesday, the 15th.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, so the date's wrong.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the two is wrong. Either it's.
The very first one for the closing date for some application submission.
That should be Wednesday, December 15th.
Yeah.
It says Wednesday, the 15th, not Wednesday.
Okay.
Good catch.
Okay, cool.
Little point.
No, it's, uh, is there an update on the, uh, ARPA funds for affordable housing fund?
I think, I think they got spent.
No.
James, last month you did say you were willing to pass on this round of ARPA. If there's another round of ARPA.
All right, we'll go for the second round. There's always a second round. Okay.
Article in the U.K. United this morning.
I know.
Sixty thousand for marketing from the ARPA fund. Or, uh, to promote the town.
Huh? T-DAC driven or?
No.
For live, New Canaan.
Marketing. Live New Canaan or live New Canaan.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, anyway, let's, let's get back to the schedule. Uh, we have to, Lynn wants us to vote on the schedule so she can post it. So I vote John Goodwin, I vote yes, John Chris.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
I vote yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um,
6:35 Frogtown?
Right. Uh, Lynn, 6:35 Frogtown. Is your mic, it's not on?
Can you hear me now?
Now it's on.
You gotta put it right up to your face, sorry.
So, um.
There we go.
6:35 Frogtown Road is, um, New Canaan Country School. And since we have, um, several newer members of the commission, I was just gonna, if the commission would let me, give you a brief overview of how we're here. But, um, as you'll recall, in June of 2018, there was, this commission granted a special permit to the New Canaan Country School to construction athletic facility. Um, subsequent to the approval and a, an abutting neighbor appealed that decision. Eventually they reached a settlement. Um, the abutting neighbor was at 579 Frogtown Road. Um, in June of 2019, the school acquired, um, the property from the neighbor that appealed. And then the school came back last year in June, um, I believe it was May and June of last year to, um, come back and ask for you, for this commission to modify condition four, which specifically stipulated that specific types of shades, um, blackout shades had to be installed in the school to protect the neighbor at 579 Frogtown Road, which was initially, um, what you guys had, uh, had, had anticipated to help mitigate it from the neighbor. But the issue became moot because the school proper, the school purchased the property at 579 Frogtown Road. Um, and thus they were the, they were the owner of both properties. So the neighbor was no longer involved. And after, when they came back here last year, this commission issued a new commit, a new condition that basically, um, read as follows. You basically asked them, you basically asked the school to come back. I'm just, for clarity, I'm just going to read it. So it's, it's long, so bear with me a moment. New Canaan, the New Canaan Country School is not required to install blackout shades at this time. However, the New Canaan Country School shall install the wiring and electronics necessary to operate blackout shades. Should they be required at a later date pending further review by the commission? One year after the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for New Canaan Country School's new gymnasium, the country school shall return to the Planning and Zoning Commission. At that time, the commission shall review the light emitted from the gymnasium after dark prior to 9:00 PM. If the commission determines by majority vote that such light emission is unreasonably disturbing to the Frogtown Road neighborhood, then the commission shall at that time address any necessary mitigation measures. So at this time, um, they received a CO in September of last year. So, and, um, the app, the country school has asked me this fall to look into whether or not, um, they need to come back to this commission. So I'm bringing it back because, um, at the end of the day, there have been no complaints from any of the neighbors, including the neighbors that complained about the potential for, um, issues with the lighting. Um, and, uh, since October 11th of 2021, which is this year, this fall, um, the lights in the gymnasium have been left on until approximately 9:00 PM every night so that it can be used by New Canaan basketball. Um, and as of right now, close of business today, we have not received any complaints about the lights or anything else on the site at all. So my question to the commission is whether by majority vote we can dispose of them needing to come back or if there's still a, a need for them to come back to this commission to discuss installing blackout shades.
Commissioners thoughts?
Kent Turner. Um, not, not so fast. I, I, um, un- understand that, um, perhaps the neighbors have not voiced an opinion about the lights. Um, they might not be aware that, um, you know, there's a condition that, uh, they need to speak up. If there is an issue, they might have felt that it was a done deal and they have no recourse. I think we need to give the neighbors an opportunity to voice their opinion, either, you know, positive or negative, before we can even begin to vote on this.
I concur with Mr. Turner on that. I think our discussion of six months ago was, um, perhaps even too lenient on the question of those shades. Um, I think that they absolutely should come back, um, as requested. And we should be really clear about enforcing requests that we have made.
Why not just wait the year, as, as we said?
It is, they have, it's a year.
Yeah, they have a year, so.
Yes.
Rather than take any action now, let's wait until June, if that's the year.
No, but Lynn, are you saying the year is up?
Received the CO in Sep- September 22nd of 2020. So we are at the year point.
Okay, so the year is up.
The year now?
Yeah.
The year since they've received it, there's, there's no issue.
But, uh, yeah, but Lynn, may I ask a question though? This Cass Van again. I, I don't think it was a year ago that we had the discussions about the, um, shade.
Yeah, they. It was?
Yep, May and June of 2020.
Time flies.
That's not the year. Thing. May, 2020, right?
COVID changes this perspective of time.
Yeah, this is John Chris, I'm, take the opposite side. I, I remember at the, when we were discussing these shades at the, at the hearing, I said, well, why don't we, you know, put some lights in, we'll do a test drive and, you know, see what people think. And, uh, so now we've had a live fire exercise for over a year and no one's complained. So, you know, frankly, it's, it's probably more or less good enough for me. Uh, at least that's where I'm coming out.
If the year is up, I agree.
Yeah, well, no one's complained and, uh, you know, they, I have every, every confidence that the neighbors would have since they seemed pretty wound up when they were here. Uh, and that if, if they did have some worries, they would have voiced them. They were not bashful souls. So my sense is that, um, if, if there is a problem, we would have heard about it by now. We haven't, so I, I've seen no reason to, to, to bring the country school in at this point. That's, that's me. I'm cool with it. Okay.
Is there a way to, to notify the, the affected neighbors and let them know that this is a proposal that they've come to us with? Just to make sure that they're, the neighbors are aware that the country school's walking away from us? Or walking us back?
Lynn? I mean, we.
There's not actually a venue to really ask the, the country school to notify.
You have to hold it right up to your face.
Sorry, there's not a venue for the country school to really notify the neighbors unless we ask them to come back for an application, which requires the notification. Um.
The condition was made public. I think the burden is on a neighbor. If the neighbor wants to complain, uh, they know what the condition is. And if nobody's come forward, I would be reluctant to invite complaints.
I, I will say the neighbors were, this was very much on their radar.
So.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
They were very sensitive to this and they were very focused. I have to assume that focus would have generated complaint had the complaint been justified. That's my take.
I, I, I will add, not to interrupt here, but I have to. It, it was during COVID where there was probably less use of that gym at night. If you drove up the street the other day, which I happened to, I actually thought about this issue because of the brightness of that facility overlooking the now, um, you know, the height. Uh, and, and, and it's a large building and a lot of light. I, I suggest only, I, I don't recommend that we go call the neighbors and say, are you unhappy? I do, however, suggest that we not amend any component. And if it's already a year and it's already done, that's surprising to me. You're right, COVID brain is hitting me, but I would not be inclined to reduce any component that we agreed.
I would agree with that.
But, but Lynn, I think you're saying we're not reducing anything, or are we?
Um, well, we're, well, we do. I'm asking you guys if you want to consider not having them come back for a formal application and consider that it's, um, that they wouldn't have to necessarily install the blackout shades? Oh, sorry. Um, uh, I'm, I mean, my, my ask is from, from a staff level is that, based on what we've seen right now, it's past, it's past a year. Um, and there's, there's been no, no complaints, no nothing, that do we need to bring them back? Um, if, if you guys say no, um, by majority vote, we could dispose of this and they wouldn't come back.
But if we, if we do bring them back, are we bringing them back in regular meeting? Are we bringing them back with a application? What are we bringing them back to do?
Um, so, um, there's, uh, there's not really a venue. It sort of would come back. I would imagine similar to what the library just did as a regular meeting item. Um, in, unless, I mean, there, there's not.
So we wouldn't take any public input?
Most likely. Which means the neighbors would, yes.
Would the, would the neighbors be noticed? Well, it doesn't matter.
We could ask.
Say anything. There was a comment from, yeah.
Okay, well, um, let's take a vote. Do I have a motion to, A, require country school to come back to commission and regular meeting to re, to present on why they should not have to install blackout sha- shades? Is that the right, am I saying it the right way, guys?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, so. Okay.
Right, this happening?
So, or the other motion is, do we agree as a commission not to require the country school to return to us?
Since there has been no complaint from a neighbor, there is really nothing for the country school to have to address if they come back to us. I think we sort of contemplated that if there was a complaint, then they had to come back and convince us that the complaint had no merit, or we would make them put in the blackout shades. But there really is no issue. The year is up.
Are you willing to make a motion then, Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion on the table, uh, per Mr. Wa- Dick, you got it.
Well, oh.
Lynn needs a vote.
And the motion would be that there is no reason to call or to have the school come back to us since there has been no complaint concerning the, uh, light from the new gym in the past year.
Okay, so that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Second, John Chris.
John Chris, okay, for the discussion of the motion, we've sort of discussed it a lot. I'm ready to call the question, but I, I don't want to shut anybody down. So does anybody want to add anything before I call the question? No? Okay. Um, so John Goodwin, I vote yes, John Chris.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
No.
Ken Turner.
No.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you. Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant.
No.
Uh, Chris Herring.
No.
Uh, it's four no's, it's one, one, two, three, five yeses. The motion carries five, four. Okay, um, minutes. Um, do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
This is Krista Nielsen, I move to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry, what was that in Zoom land?
This is Krista, I approve the minutes. I vote to approve the minutes.
Okay, do I?
Move to approve the minutes, that's what I do.
Mr. Ward was going to do it, but he just told me it was gun shy. Wait a second.
He should be, second.
Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin, I vote yes. Uh, John Chris.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
Uh, Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.